Okay, thank you. Can I welcome you all, members and the viewing public, to this meeting of the City Council? Can I first of all ask the General Counsel, David Hollis, to announce the housekeeping arrangements?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just before I go to the normal housekeeping, can I just mention the temperature in here? As many of you know, we had an issue with the boiler last night. Engineers have been working on it since then, and it has been restarted. But due to the size of the system, the refilling and venting takes some time and takes several hours. There are a number of electric heaters around, so please do be careful not to cover those or to trip over the cabling, and we will monitor the situation as we go through with regard to the temperature. Now, with the normal housekeeping announcement, can I request members of the public to familiarise themselves with the fire safety and evacuation notices displayed in the public gallery? In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the security attendants, who will be in attendance throughout the meeting. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? Today will be webcast, and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. If any member of the public is due to speak and does not want to be recorded, they should say so at the start of their speech, and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. For safety reasons, please don't hang recording equipment over the balcony. Finally, although there are no longer any specific Covid measures to adhere to, individuals are very welcome to wear a face covering within the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I shall conclude these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30, but I will adjourn the meeting at an appropriate point in proceedings to give members the opportunity to take a comfort break. Before we start the formal business of today's meeting, I now propose that we hold a minute's silence in memory of councillor Vicky Priestley, who sadly passed away on the 7th of November. Vicky was a colleague and friend to all of us in this chamber. She served on the council since 2000, albeit with a short break between 2002 and 2004, and was Lord Mayor in 2013 to 2014. A funeral service will be held in the cathedral this Friday at 10.30, and following that service, there will be reception at the family, and obviously you are all welcome to attend in the reception rooms at the town hall here. I'm going to provide an opportunity for members to pay tribute to Vicky immediately after our comfort break at about four o'clock this afternoon. Sadly, I also need to mark the passing of another former councillor, Diana Stanley, who served on this council between May 2011 and 2015, representing the Epsom Ward. And it's also worth noting and mentioning that the death of Dame Antonia Susan Duffy, critic and author who died on the 16th of November, better known to us as Eurot under the name of A.S. Byatt, and won the Booker Prize in 1990 for her novel Possession. She was born in Sheffield as Antonia Drabble, and sister of Margaret, obviously. So can you now join me? Those who can stand, please do so, in a minute's silence in tribute to Vicky, Diana and A.S. Byatt. Thank you. Please be seated. Item two on the agenda is apologies for absence. I've had apologies from the following members: Fran Belbin, Lewis Chin Chin, Dawn Dale, Abstisam Mohammed, Sophia Said, Gary Wetherell, Paul Wood, Malaki Haibey, Bernard Little, Richard Shaw. Are there any other apologies?
Lord Mayor, from councillor Mathew.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, exclusion of the present public. There are no items on the agenda for this meeting where resolutions may be moved to exclude the present public. Item four on the agenda is declarations of interest, and this item is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on the agenda. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Okay, no declarations of interest. Thank you. Item five is public questions and petitions and other communications. First of all, in my part of the announcement, I believe Shonet is going to hand round a collection for the Archer Project, is our traditional collection from the council during the course of this meeting. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. We encourage questions or petitions to be submitted two clear days in advance of the meeting to help public attendance to be managed in a safe and orderly way at the meeting, and to assist members to provide responses or answers. Petitions or questions received after the submission deadline can be presented or asked at the meeting at my discretion, and I've had no notification of any late submissions. For this meeting, there are no petitions to be presented, and questions will be taken from four members of the public. A period of 60 minutes is allowed in total for all petitions and questions, and clearly today, we shouldn't be approaching the 60 minutes. May I ask the questioners to be as brief as possible when asking the questions, and that members keep their responses short and succinct? This is to ensure as much time as possible is available for other items of business on the agenda at today's meeting. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Right, the first question I have is from Hilary Smith. Could you approach the microphone, Hilary? Thank you.
Thank you. I asked a question at the recent Strategy and Resources Policy Committee about the steps that the council could take to reduce its complicity with Israel's system of apartheid and ethnic cleansing. In response, the leader of the council told me what he thought the council was unable to do. What he did not do was to tell me what steps he thought that the council could take to reduce its financial relationship with companies or institutions that support directly or indirectly Israel's system of apartheid. The council is aware of the United Nations database of companies that operate in or otherwise support Israeli settlements, all illegal under international law. Will the council commit to investigating, as a matter of urgency, whether it has any financial relationship with any of these companies, directly or indirectly, and make that information public? And secondly, if the council concludes that it is unable to disengage from financial relationships with any of these companies, will the council make that information public? Sheffield residents have a right to know if the council's business make it complicit with Israeli apartheid, and a right to know if the law explicitly prevents the council from ending these financial relationships. Thirdly, the leader did not respond at Strategy and Resources Committee to my question about whether the council would change its bank from Barclays. Will the leader now answer that question? A genocide is taking place in front of our eyes, a genocide made possible because the world gave the green light to Israeli apartheid. Let this council delay no longer in taking action against Israel's system of apartheid. Thank you.
councillor Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your questions. I think when answering these questions, it's really important that we're very clear about the actions of the government of Israel and the state of Israel. I think it's really important that we separate those out. Your first and second questions refer to businesses within the database of business enterprises that are published by the United Nations. The current database includes 112 businesses, of which three are UK companies. I've requested the officers investigate whether we have a contractual relationship with any of those companies, and I will send you a written response when we have that information. I can't answer what we would do when we get that information at this stage, because we need to know what the situation is, but I will commit to being open and transparent when we have that information. In response to the third question about our banking arrangements, the contract was procured in 2022. Process was run as an open tender, as required by the Public Contracts Regulations. Social value commitments were considered as part of the evaluation when awarding that contract. Contractors and suppliers are required to abide by the principles of the council's ethical procurement policy and ethical code of conduct for suppliers. There are no plans at present to change the banking contract, and I am confident that procurement officers at the council will continue to apply the ethical procurement policy correctly and will provide advice about if changes were required and needed to be made. And pending that further information, I would of course discuss with colleagues what action needed to be taken. Thank you.
The next question is from Val Johnson.
I noted the comments of the leader at the last full council meeting, which I attended, when he referred to the need of the city to come together and there to be unity. I'm also aware of some individuals attempting to characterise the marches and rallies which take place in solidarity with the Palestinian people as hate marches. The marches and rallies which have been taking place in our city have been a model of everything which makes me proud to live in Sheffield. Far from being marches of hate, they've included people of all ages, including many families, people from Christian, Jewish, Muslim and secular backgrounds, and included speakers from many diverse backgrounds. We are united, not because we are on one side or the other, but because we believe in human rights, international law and justice for all. And we will not stay silent whilst the Palestinian people are being oppressed by military occupation and ethnic cleansing of the most brutal kind. My question is to ask members of this council if they will attend a rally, listen to the speakers and then reflect on their responsibilities to defend our human rights and to uphold international law. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. councillor Hunt to respond.
Thank you very much for your question. The description hate marches that the former Home Secretary used is offensive, and I utterly reject it. Tarring everybody with the same brush is dangerous and divisive rhetoric from a Tory party that has sought to stoke up and a manufactured culture war. If this government had spent more time focusing on diplomatic solutions to this crisis rather than seeking to divide people, then I know that we would all be in a better place. Frankly, the only positive thing I can say on this matter is that Suella Breverman is no longer the Home Secretary, and I sincerely hope that next year the rest of the cabinet will follow her out of the exit door and be replaced by a Labour Party that takes its responsibilities at home and abroad seriously. Members of this council have attended rallies, vigils, solidarity walks, and have organised fundraisers to raise money for humanitarian relief efforts in Gaza. Thank you very much. I know that every member of this chamber takes their responsibilities seriously, and it's incumbent on all of us to work together at this time to bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you. Third question is from Annie Ogara.
Thank you. The context: Sheffield was the first local authority in the UK to declare itself an apartheid-free zone in 1981, in the days of South African apartheid. Council members then took a bold, principled stance against this crime, creating a reputation for Sheffield that is celebrated to this day. In the Strategy and Resources Committee of November 20, I asked a question arising from the council resolution of November 1 regarding the Sheffield Coalition Against Israeli Apartheid. In response, the leader promised that officers will prepare a thorough report for consideration by the Strategy and Resources Committee, following which a recommendation will be made to the committee. The leader also said that he himself would meet the coalition, and he would tell leaders of other parties details of that meeting with, quote, "no expectation on them whether they want to attend". He added that he himself would read the materials submitted by the coalition, and he would circulate it to others, presumably with no expectation that they would read it. The materials comprise our launch pamphlet and the executive summary of Amnesty's report, Israeli Apartheid Against Palestinians: A Cruel System of Domination and a Crime Against Humanity. My questions: Will the report by officers on this issue, including the recommendation, be given to the coalition in advance of the relevant Strategy and Resources Committee meeting in the new year? Are we correct in interpreting the leader's words as meaning the following? That he will be the one and only officer or elected member who commits to meeting the coalition? That he places no expectation on anyone else to join him in that discussion or even to read succinct materials on an important citizens' movement and on Israel's crime against humanity? That the council Strategy and Resources Committee will reply on a report under recommendation by officers only, whilst elected members have no responsibility to engage with this city's response to apartheid as their predecessors in 1981 did? If we're correct in our interpretation of the words, will the leader now assure us that any meeting between the council and the coalition reflects the magnitude of the moral and the legal issues involved by guaranteeing that this meeting isn't marginalised, as his words clearly suggest? And lastly, has the chief executive sent a letter to the government, as resolved on November 1? And if so, we request a copy, both of that letter to the government and of any reply received. How has the chief executive enacted what she was clearly asked to do by the City Council on November 1?
councillor Hunt.
Thank you very much for your questions. On the subject of the report, once it's been written, then yes, I will share it with the coalition, and I will ask my office to arrange a meeting for us to discuss that report once it's ready and able to be discussed. As I said last month at the Strategy and Resources Committee meeting, I will share the details of that meeting with the other party leaders once it's been arranged. My words were to say that they would be, of course, very welcome, but I cannot mandate anyone else to join, but that is a question for them. I am very happy to meet with you and other members of the coalition to discuss the report. In advance of any committee meeting, Strategy and Resources or any other policy committee, elected members meet with officers to discuss and shape the contents of reports, and that is what will happen in this instance, before that meeting takes place in the new year. That meeting that we have will be to discuss matters that are of significant importance to a great many people in this city. The chief executive did write to the Prime Minister. That letter was sent on November 8, and a copy of that letter can be sent to you. The letter was to make the Prime Minister aware of the motion that was passed in this chamber on November 1, as that motion requested. No reply has been received. This was the only action that was requested by, for the chief executive in relation to the matter, and it has been enacted. Thank you very much for your questions.
Thank you. Now move to a question from Simon Jenkins.
Hi, good afternoon. It's regarding the reduction of the multi-use games area at Hillsborough Park to enable a new proposed activity hub and cafe. What consultation was taken place on this? As there was a petition against, with 2,000 signatures taken by Friends of Hillsborough Park, who have now disbanded due to lack of support from the council. Also, were relevant local businesses, such as already operating cafes consulted? And were groups who rely on MUGA, such as Friends Together, taken into consideration, as they were clearly not consulted?
Thank you. Can I call on councillor Richard Williams to respond to that question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Jenkins, for your question. Regarding the reduction of the MUGA at Hillsborough Park, the report went to the charity's sub-policy committee on the 5th of June 2023. That sets out the proposal for the park, the activity hub and a full consultation details. That report is over 250 pages long. It is available on the website, and my written response to you will contain a link. And I would ask you to, if you make a note, pages 26 to 28 are the summary of the consultation. There was a great deal of it. With regard to the Friends of Hillsborough Park, I'm genuinely sorry they have decided to go the route they have gone. I fully respect it. Volunteer groups have the right to decide their own destiny. I have thanked them for the work they have done over many years. It's been incredibly valuable and has resulted in significant changes seen in the park, including the investment into the coach house, improvements to the playground, installation of the all-wheels track and more. Part of their announcement that they were disbanded was they felt they hadn't been listened to. I think they do themselves a great disservice. I remember, as a result of them bringing questions to the policy committee, we arranged an onsite meeting with them, some members of the committee and some local members too. And Annie Chaplin, who represented the Friends Park, told us about his concerns. And as a direct result of what he said, the way the MUGA is going to be used going forward has changed. And so they should take credit for that. I know that they have actually started to form another group specifically focusing on the wall garden, and I hope that they will continue to have a good relationship with the council. And I think it goes across the whole of the city. We have, our parks rely on Friends groups throughout the city for support and help, and we couldn't work or make the parks what they are without them. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the public questions. We now move on to item six on the agenda, members' questions. Again, there's a maximum time limit, 30 minutes for this whole item of business. 6.1, questions on urgent business, and there are no questions on urgent business today. 6.2, questions of the Joint Authorities. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members of the council to ask questions on the discharge of the functions of the South Yorkshire Joint Authorities for Fire and Rescue and Pensions and of the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority. Advanced notices and questions relating to the South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authorities. These questions were submitted by councillors Sophie Thornton, Richard Shaw and Ian Horner, and this has enabled the councils represented on the Merrill Combined Authority, councillor Tom Hunt, to provide answers. Similarly, councillor Bernard Little has given the advanced notices of several questions relating to the South Yorkshire Pensions Authority, and this has enabled councillor Jane Dunn, the council's spokesperson on the pensions authority, to provide answers. Copies of all these questions and responses have been circulated at the meeting and published on the council's website. Do I have any of those named members wishing to ask a supplementary question? Councillor Horner. Scott, sorry. Councillor Thornton. Can you borrow?
Borrowing Martens, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your answer, councillor Hunt. I just wanted to come back on the first section about the M17 service. As much as I fully respect within a tendering process, you can't compel any operator to bid for it. What next now for this service? Are we going to just leave it as it is, without the service that people really, really depend on? Or is there going to be another contracting process going forward? Can you talk me through that, please?
I think it's important to recognise that at the moment, Sheffield City Council, the Merrill Combined Authority, does not have any direct control over bus services. The mayor is working to bring in, is going through an assessment process right now for whether or not we can move to a franchised system, which would give us greater control over routes, over fares, over timetables. So at the moment, the situation that I've laid out in my response is correct, that it's not possible to compel an operator to bid for a contract. I can commit today to take away that and speak to colleagues at the Merrill Combined Authority about that particular service for you.
Thank you. councillor Horner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I asked two questions, and thank you for your detailed response.
response, councillor Hunt. On the first question, I was quite kind to ask, you know, only drawing attention to the increase in the standard fare. The increase for students, 18 to 21-year-old fare, is 150%. It's gone up from 80p to £2. So parents across the city are faced with a huge increase in bills at the time of a cost of living crisis. You also then talk about the tram system. I support the tram system. I came to this meeting today on the tram, as I do indeed come on the tram to every council meeting. Are you not aware that there is a restoring your railways bid for the Barrow Hill line? So I'm not entirely sure. I'm entirely happy to get a railway station in Baiton again, which was closed by a Labour government. Are you not aware that there is this restoring your railways bid? And how would you path the tram train down what would be potentially a very busy line? It's already a passenger diversion line, and when it reaches Woodhouse, it would mix in with passenger services. So let's be clear, is this a thought-out proposal? Or is it just something nice to say in a video?
Thank you very much, councillor Horner. You were very nice to me earlier on. There is a restoring your railways bid, and for anyone who doesn't know, this is a scheme where the Department for Transport have invited areas of the country to bid in for railway lines that they think ought to be reopened and fully support that bid. There's also another bid for the Don Valley Line to Stockbridge. This would be an opportunity to run tram train services on a railway line, as happens from Sheffield through to Rotherham. So it wouldn't be about running trams that we might see on some of the streets of Sheffield out there. It would be running our tram train, which would be well-equipped for the railway line. So it's not an issue in the way that you're suggesting it might be. Look, we've had a tram network in this city now for 35 years. It is a low-carbon mass transit system that frankly, other cities are extremely jealous of, and we haven't expanded it in a significant way, apart from a minor extension into Rotherham. It is absolutely right that we are now talking about expanding the tram network. Sheffield City Council and the Merrill Combined Authority are doing a joint piece of work right now in order to put together a tram vision for how we can expand the network, and it will draw on the excellent work that's gone into those restoring your railways bids. So this is a thought-through proposal, and conversations have been had with the Department for Transport, the rail minister, Hugh Merriman was in Sheffield about four weeks ago and came to look at tram train and to see how the network could be expanded. So this is not, this is a detailed piece of work that is going on right now. And on your pricing question around fares, the situation that we've been put in around ticketing directly relates to the chronic and sustained under-investment in public transport by central government over many decades. So that is the situation that we've been forced into, and as I put in my answer, South Yorkshire has received around £30 less per head than other comparable city regions. So I'm afraid we are having to have some hard conversations at the MCA, but this is about protecting the network and doing so in a way that allows us to look forward to a bigger network in the future with a bit more optimism.
I believe you want to make a factual correction?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Horner said a Labour government closed Baiton Station. It was rebuilt in 1950 under a Labour government and closed in 1954 under a Conservative government.
Historical lesson there. Thank you. That's...
Sorry, I had a second question, because I've asked two questions. A second supplementary.
Yes, so on the second question then.
Yeah, very simple point, Lord Mayor. Councillor, you keep talking about the underfunding as compared to other city regions. Those city regions that I've quoted all have Labour mayors. At what point are you going to say, why is it we have failed to get the money? Why have Labour failed to get the money in South Yorkshire when a Labour mayor has got money in Liverpool, a Labour mayor has got money in Greater Manchester, and a Labour mayor has got money in West Yorkshire?
Councillor Hunt.
And it is a, and it is a Conservative government that has for years underfunded our public transport system in this region. The Labour mayor of South Yorkshire is undergoing a franchising assessment process right now to think about how we can bring our buses back under public control, which will allow us to bring in more investment, have more control over routes, fares and timetables. And I very much hope that we can have support from right across this chamber for that work, which will put us in a better place to be able to support bus services in south-east of Sheffield, the north-west of Sheffield, right across this city. Because right now, it is not good enough, and we, the Labour Party in this city, are supporting the work of the mayor, and I very much hope that colleagues from the Liberal Democrat Party can get on board with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the questions on the joint authorities. We now move to the questions of members on the sheets that have been circulated, and this is your opportunity to ask a supplementary question. In the usual way, I'll take it page by page. Page one, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Right, back to things in Sheffield. It's fair to say that the felling of the street trees in Sheffield was a shameful episode that went on for many, many years in the city. And one of the findings of the Low Cock Report that we all commissioned as soon as this council moved into no overall control, to get to the bottom of that and get some understanding and some truth and some reconciliation, was the recognition that a lot of people were hurt, physically and mentally, over a long time. And the approach towards apologies was the step towards, or a partial step at least, towards doing what we could to repair some of the damage that had been caused and do it in a public and visible way. So thanks to your answer, Ron, you tried to address where we are with the outstanding apologies. It's been some time now, so I just wanted to ask if you've got any indication of the time scale in which we might be able to wrap up this process and say that whilst we recognise that we can't do everything to put things right because we simply can't reverse time and bad decisions, there are some things we can do to at least acknowledge that. Thank you.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. You're right, significant harms were caused by the actions of Sheffield City Council during the years of the street tree dispute. One of the first things that I did as council leader was issue a full and frank public apology to the people of Sheffield for the harms that were caused. The process for individuals to receive apologies that you've mentioned has been taking place over the last few months, and I've been involved in some apology meetings with residents in the city, and these are important but often difficult conversations. The two people that we're in contact with about their apology and the waiting for their draft apology, we're hoping that that will be with them by the end of the month. And then for the further individuals who've had an initial apology, that process should be complete in the early part of 2024.
Thank you. Still on page one, page two, page three, page four, page five. Page five, councillor Masters.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've actually got supplementaries on all my four questions. So do I give them all at once or one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Right, okay. The first supplementary refers to questions one and four. Right, I mean, sort of, every time I've asked about this, we're told a report has been commissioned, but we never see the report. How many reports have been commissioned on the buildings in the last eight years? Or is it the same report repeatedly recycled in the hope that finally it'll give you the answer that you want to see? Thank you. That's the first question.
I can come back to you with the question, with the answer to your question on how many have been commissioned in the last eight years. The answer that I've given relates to the question you've asked me previously. A report was commissioned and received this year, and that will now inform the committee report that's coming to S and R on December the 21st. But I can get that information. As you know, I've been in this post since May this year. I don't have the full details of everything that's taken place over the last eight years. In fact, one of the reasons why I'm bringing this to S and R and have strongly encouraged officers to do so is because for too long, decisions around the Central Library and Graves have not been in front of committees, and there's been a lack of transparency about the process. We're now putting it into the public domain, and the report that you'll see at S and R will give us a framework where we can make decisions about how best to ensure that that fantastic building has a better future than it does at the moment, which we know it's got significant maintenance issues.
Is supplementary to which question now then?
Right. Try again. These are just recommendations. We could have identified these measures ourselves. They should have been carried out as regular maintenance. Your answer implies the work on infilling cracks and cathodic protection. Thank you. Right. It's this one I'm working on. Right. Carry on. Right. Is only under development. Is this correct? And what is actually being done now to protect the integrity of the building?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you. You're right that the measures that I set out here, including cathodic protection, have been recommended by that report, and there are several checks that take place, as it says here, daily, weekly and quarterly to inspect the building. Part of why we're bringing the report to S and R is to give much more visibility to the maintenance issues that that building has. But I will come back to you with more detail on whether that is what the current state is on the measures here and whether they're already being implemented. But I'll follow up with you, councillor Masters.
Thank you. And the last question was about question three. Will the proposals to improve the appearance, the outward appearance of the building, include better signage to make clear the building is open? It is something that's been raised. It looks closed. Thank you.
Yes, I think we can improve the visual appearance of the building, improve the visual appearance of the hoardings right now, and make it clearer that the building is open.
Right, we're on page six now. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm grateful to councillor Hunt for the reply to my questions. I do think, however, that we seem to be confounding two issues here. My question two was about a specific piece of land which is still in the ownership, well, in the retention of the council, which I'm informed by the Friends of Graves Park is not, that only a portion of that land, and I've been given the area, anything between 3,640 square metres or 5,720 square metres. If that were relinquished, that would enable the Friends of Graves Park to complete restoration of phase three of the arboretum. And the information I've been provided with that would be, says that that area that I've just mentioned would give an ideal tree planting area and sufficient space into which Sheffield City Council can position their waste gives in the remaining land adjacent. So in terms of question two, your response to question two, we're not talking about the whole of the former Norton Nursery site for that particular project to be, to go ahead, regardless of the accommodation review and the depot strategy. So would you reconsider your response on that particular aspect? In terms of the glass houses which form part of the former Norton Nursery site, I understand that there are groups, and it was raised at the recent South Local Area Committee, that regather, one of those groups that have been waiting to look at whether the use of part of the glass houses at Norton Nurseries could be used for a project that they have in mind on that part of Norton Nursery site. So I hope, can I ask you, would you consider looking again at those, you know?
Thank you, councillor Harris. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly happy to have a further follow-up conversation with you about this to get a better understanding of those issues that you've raised. And the answer to question three states that the council has given that commitment to move operational staff from that part of Graves Park as soon as alternative facilities are found. But perhaps let's have a follow-up conversation about that.
Okay, we're at page eight now. Yes, councillor Ossland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Hunt, for your responses. Our contact centres are open from 8.30am until 5.30pm, but with the average waiting time being over 20 minutes and the longest waiting time being a staggering 1 hour 36 minutes, can councillor Hunt advise all of Sheffield's residents who work a 9 to 5 job when they should phone to pay their council tax?
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you. The performance of that contact line clearly needs to improve, and as I've set out in the response there, new staff are being recruited, have been allocated on to the line, being trained to use it, and are now starting to take calls. And that should see that average wait time reduce down. But we know that the performance needs to improve, and actions are being taken in order to do that.
Right, we're on page nine, page 10.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Dan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Hunt for your responses. As leader of Sheffield City Council, could you describe your relationship with councillor Peter Mason and his role in relation to Sheffield?
Councillor Hunt.
The Campaign Improvement Board that you're asking me about is a wholly Labour Party matter, nothing to do with the running of Sheffield City Council whatsoever. So my relationship with Peter Mason is nothing to do with this role at all. It does what it says on the tin. It is there to help the Labour Party to improve its campaigning, and I very much hope that you will all be seeing the results of that at the ballot box in May.
We're on page 10, page...
Oh, yeah.
Which, can you say which question?
Question three, sorry. That was question one. Question three. So in my question, I've said that nine companies whose weapons, components and military technology have been, that Barclays invests in nine companies whose weapons, components and military technology have been used in Israel's armed violence...
technology have been used in Israel's armed violence against Palestinians. So I don't think the council can now say that the council will not knowingly invest in businesses whose activities and practices are inconsistent with the council's values. Are the council's values to support the indiscriminate killing of Palestinian people?
Thank you. The information that is included in your question, by all means if you want to provide further information on that, as I said in the response to the public question earlier on, I am sure that procurement officers here will continue to apply the ethical procurement policy in the correct way. If information is received that means that that needs to change, then of course it will be looked at.
Page 11, page 12. Again, which question?
Question five. Okay, so this question was on the council's recognition of the state of Palestine. So the state of Palestine aims to have East Jerusalem as its capital. This is recognised in international law that East Jerusalem is occupied Palestinian territory. Does this answer that you've given, which omits East Jerusalem, signify that the Labour Party is gearing up to recognise the illegal annexation and ethnic cleansing of Jerusalem, including of the Armenian quarter and as well as the Palestinian people?
No, it doesn't. That's an extraordinary leap to make that assertion. The answer that I've given is about the fact that the motion that was passed by Sheffield City Council in 2019 made no reference to the capital. So that is why the answer does not make reference to the capital, because I'm answering it on the question that you asked me. So to draw any wider assertions from that, I think would be quite a step.
Page 12, page 13. Yes, councillor Blue.
Thank you. First, I will say to Val, I will be happy to attend rally, I listen to speakers. So this is in regards to question two. In the previous convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy and in whole or in part a national, ethnic, racial or religious group as such, killing members of the group, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group and deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. So my question is, given that these are the extraordinary conditions that Israel is inflicting on the Palestinians, would you now like to take this opportunity to call out the genocide that is taking place in Palestine?
That's essentially the question you've asked me and my answer is set out there. I would like to have the moral certainty of you and others who are able to assert that a genocide is taking place. As I've set out in my answer, this is an extremely complex legal term with a specific definition, which is about the intentional destruction of people.
Shameful.
A full criminal trial would need to take place, as has done with regard to investigations in the Balkans and in Rwanda, when genocides have been taken, have been inflicted upon people. I'm not in that position, and I don't think anyone here is in that position, to be able to say with the certainty with which it's set out here that this is what is happening. The words in this chamber make a huge amount of difference. People are watching what we're saying and I think people ought to be very careful about terms that they're using in this chamber about actions which are happening. So I would just, you can read my answer there councillor Ralph, and you know what I'm saying on this one.
So we will say that we did nothing in five years' time when the genocide is complete.
Please, please, this is members' questions now. We're still on page 13, page 14, page 15.
It was the question seven, sorry, question three on page 13. Given the answer you have provided, I am concerned that you think it is only Muslims that have suffered losses in Palestine. Do you recognise that there are Christians who have also suffered losses at the hands of the terrorist regime of Israel?
Councillor Hunt.
Yes, and the answer here that is referring to a range of services that are available. So again, to draw wider assertions from that, I think is wrong. And this was just to highlight a range of different services that are available.
Question four. You state that it is through continued interfaith dialogue, given that one of your answers later on suggests that these structures are insufficient in scope. Would you now agree that the answer you have provided, for want of a better word, is bon con?
Councillor Hunt again.
No, I wouldn't. The answer that I've set out relates to the fact that, you know, we are working to promote interfaith dialogue in this city. It's essential that there are strong and open links between different faith and community group leaders in this city so that we can talk about the common challenges that we face in this city and how we can work together to address them. It has been an extremely difficult time for many communities in the city over the past couple of months, and our job in this chamber is to do what we can to try to bring people together through formal and informal interfaith structures.
Just a moment. We're almost coming to the end of the time allotted for this. There's got a few minutes left, but please bear in mind that there are other members wanting to ask supplementary questions as well.
Question five. You keep talking about bringing communities together and you say it was not wrong to show solidarity to the Israelis. Do you think it is wrong to show solidarity with the Palestinians?
No, I don't. No, I don't. I think it's right that, you know, we choose the appropriate actions to show solidarity. So...
Question six. You say that the flag of Israel was flown to show solidarity with the victims of that attack. Would you like to explain to the public why you will or will not honour the Green Party's request to fly the flag of Palestine so as to show solidarity with the innocent people in that country who have faced appalling acts of terror from Israel since their creation?
The answer that you're seeking is set out in response to question eight. And there was a request from the Green Party group of councillors to fly the Palestinian flag. And in response to the decision-making process around flying the Israeli flag, we reflected, I talked about this a lot at full council last month, and said that what we needed to do for future requests when they were made was ensure that there was a full qualities impact assessment, that there was dialogue with faith and community leaders to take soundings, and that a wide range of input was sought for any decision. That was done. The chief executive over the last month, six weeks or so, has had 18 different meetings with faith and community leaders in order to talk to people about tensions in the city right now and understand the feelings in different communities and to discuss the request. And the considered recommendation that was made to all party leaders last week was to not fly the Palestinian flag for the reasons that it would cause more tension in the city. And this was based on the quality of the impact assessment and the community tension impact assessment. All of the party leaders accepted that recommendation and the detailed answer contains the information that you need.
Fine, fine question. Question seven and question eight. Both of these questions have been adopted by the yourself own officers. Therefore, I will be bringing these questions back in their original form at the next council meeting. Please could I ask why both of these questions have been contaminated with your own views rather than sticking to their original questions?
Honestly, I'm not sure what you mean by that. Sorry.
Right, I think we've got time for perhaps two more supplementary questions only. So we're on page 18.
Thank you for allowing the time. Thank you to councillor Hunt for the reply to my original question and for the actions already taken. So I'm talking with my back to you. The actions already taken to draw attention to this issue of moorland burning and the effects on the people of Sheffield in terms of pollution. I'm sure everyone who's concerned about that will continue to urge for significant change to legislation and priorities. But after that significant pollution event from the burning at the start of October on the Mozca estate, I looked for air quality data from within my own ward, Crooks and Crosspool, so that I could provide concerned residents who had contacted me with data and use that also to support my own complaint about the incident. But I found there was no air quality monitoring for my ward. So could some effort be made to have a careful look at how monitoring stations are sighted across the city? Whether we need perhaps additional equipment to properly monitor air quality across Sheffield and also ensure that we work effectively with community resources such as the Clean Air for Sheffield campaign group and make effective use of every resource available, including through community groups like that and fully join up council and non-council efforts and expertise. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Milstone, and thank you for the work that you've done to raise attention to the issue of moorland burning. I was at Blackmore on Friday to see what a moorland looks like where moorland burning does not take place. This is a moorland that is owned by Sheffield City Council but managed by Sheffield and Rotherham Wildlife Trust, who do a fantastic job to manage that moorland on behalf of the council. We banned moorland burning on land that we own and I've written to the Secretary of State to call for a ban for national change to come in for a full ban. A full ban is needed because moorland burning is deeply damaging to biodiversity of our uplands. It significantly increases flood risk by encouraging water to pour off the moors far quicker than if vegetation was, would grow up. But also, moorland burning causes significant air pollution issues in our city. We're taking steps as a city council to improve air pollution in the city and, you know, moorland burning drives a coach and horses through all of that. And I think it's absolutely right that we look to see what we can do to monitor the impact of that. And I'd be glad to take up the thrust of your question with the public health team here to see what might be possible.
All right, we're on question 20, page 20 rather. Sophie, this will be the last supplementary question. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you councillor Rooney first. And because I made the mistake, I'll allow councillor Thornton to have it afterwards.
I'm sorry, I haven't got my gizmo, so I'm going to have to speak loudly, which isn't normally a problem. Douglas, have you any idea how many flat roof properties there are in the city? And are we planning to have a look at doing something about the problem that they quite often bring, which is leakage and damp? Because it's, over the years, it's probably the biggest, one of the biggest roofing problems that I've had to deal with. Flat roofs, they're barmy.
Thanks, yeah. I was tempted to go around and have a quick count up of the flat roofs, but I'm not going to. We can find out, can't we? We can ask the officers. I take the point you're making that there's been under investment in council housing for many, many years by this council, but there we are.
Final question from councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, it's really appreciated. Councillor Johnson, I am appalled in particular to your answer to question number one, not only at how people in our housing, our council housing and estates having to wait the best part of a third of a year for a repair, for a planned repair, but at this response as effective use of a person's support needs as an excuse for a wait of over two and a half years, which to me could frankly read as discriminatory. So should vulnerable people be expected to wait seven and a half times longer than those without those additional needs for a planned repair? And what are you going to do about it?
Yeah. Don't think that's what the answer says at all. That's just nonsense. Maybe get your colleagues to raise it in the committee. We're meeting next Thursday.
So the longest was 129 days and 960 days because of the person's support needs is perfectively what it says, so...
Thank you councillor Thornton. That concludes the time limit we've got on that item for members' questions. I'm now moving on to item seven on the agenda, which is notice of motion regarding Sheffield's diverse communities standing together. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Barbara Masters to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before you start the clock, can I just ask, in moving this, can I ask councillor's permission to alter Stannington floods in B2 to Stannington gas and water emergency? Just clarify.
I assume that's accepted by the council. Yes, agreed. Go on, carry on councillor Hunt.
I'm an incomer, as anyone can tell by listening to me. I was brought up in a community which did not tolerate outsiders, something I was perceived to be. When I first came to live in Sheffield, you can't imagine the surprise I felt, tinged with suspicion of living in a place where people were invariably friendly and helpful. There was sympathy and laughter, not at, but with, someone unused to Sheffield ways, including the Sheffield fish cake. We pride ourselves on being welcoming, friendly to strangers and rightly so, to being the first city of sanctuary, and where we led, others have followed. A city with a rich cultural heritage drawing on our diversity, a city whose immigrants helped build our industrial base reliant on quality and innovation. We've moved with the times. A social mores change, we have too, often being at the forefront of fighting the injustices of the past. The work towards achieving an equitable society goes on. We take for granted that community cohesion developed over years is a given. It's not. It's easily destroyed in an age where, to misquote, "a lycan travel round the globe faster than the truth has left the starting gate", in a time of social media. We have seen the results: fear of difference, suspicion, intolerance rising, the stoking of a victim culture where no one has individual agency. We've seen worse. It happens to individuals and communities, in schools, the workplace and in public spaces. What we have has been hard won, building on the work of successive generations but easily destroyed. There is still a lot more to do. That is why we held the Race Equality Commission, we have the Strategic Equality and Inclusion Board and are now developing the Cohesion Framework, which takes its lead from the city goals to which all Sheffield residents can contribute. We want to move forward, not be dragged back to a divisive past, which is why we have brought this motion to full council, to remind us of what we are and what we aspire to become. Sheffield Made is more than a respected trade stamp. We are Sheffield Made, whether our family's roots here stretch back for generations or whether we are incomers. Our reputation as a city and how we conduct ourselves in it matters. That includes showing the world how our diverse communities stand together. Lord Mayor, I ask this chamber to support our motion in full. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Masters. Councillor Sophie Thornton to second the motion and speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to send my, and I'm sure shared by everyone in this chamber, our wishes for all of the community celebrations that will be going on, not just in this month but going into the next year. A belated Happy Diwali, Hanukkah from tomorrow, Merry Christmas and of course Eid as well. Sheffield is a fabulous, diverse community and it's a place that I've been very proud to grow up in and live for most of my life. And I think that it's a really beautiful place that shows how people do come together, particularly with reference to how communities came together for the people of Stannington during the gas floods this time last year.
during the gas floods this time last year. One of the best examples I have is actually something quite personal to me, where of a person who really does embody that spirit of bringing people together in the face of serious adversity. When I went to Shrebenitsa in 2015, and the woman there, she had sadly lost all three of her sons in the Balkan conflict, and they had only been able to recover two bones of her third son for her to bury. And she had gone through unimaginable horror. But that said, she took a look at the delegation of us that had gone and travelled with remembering Shrebenitsa and said, despite all of that, I forgive these people and I see all of you as my children. And that will always stay with me as something that I think that we should all embody and a really, really important way to show that actually, no matter how much you've gone through, that we can really, really bring people together. And it's why it's so wrong and disappointing to me, that at a time where people are going through so much with a cost of living crisis and with everything in the national and international news, that the government seem hell-bent, as they have been for years, on trying to get us to blame those struggles on people who are vulnerable and desperate in a dinghy. That is just utterly, utterly wrong. And I think that, at the end of the day, Sheffield is so much better than that divisive Tory rhetoric. We are a city of sanctuary. I hope colleagues here will join us in the spirit of this motion in bringing people together, especially at this very important time of year. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are numbers one and two on the list of amendments circulated at the meeting. May I call upon councillor Laura Moynihan to move amendment number one? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I broadly welcome this motion. I'd like to say that Sheffield has a long history of accepting refugees from war zones, not just Ukraine, but from Chile, Somalia, Kashmir, Burma, Palestine, Yemen and many more countries. However, I'd like to take this motion further. I don't think we should just be celebrating diversity, I think we should be promoting it, we should be bringing it into all our political structures, ensuring that we involve, engage and bring people from diverse backgrounds, particularly those with protected characteristics, into our council chamber, our elected bodies, et cetera. I think that if we involve, if we have greater diversity, that leads to better decision-making. And that's why I particularly welcome the involve report that went to the government's committee, because that talks about how we gain that diversity, and that's by engagement, involvement with all sections of our community. It doesn't happen by accident, it needs sustained, extensive community development work. I'd really like to celebrate that the MOBO, the Music of Black Origin Awards are coming to Sheffield. That shows that we're seen as a diverse city that embraces black music and culture. And I think it will be an inspiration for many of our young people, and I look forward to building on that for the success of everybody in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen McGarrett to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to be able to second this amendment today. We have seen time and time again how across this diverse city, our communities are pulled together to support each other in times of crisis, whether this has been due to conflict overseas, flooding, the cost of living crisis, to name only a few in recent times. We see every day the fantastic work our communities do in supporting each other across Sheffield, showcasing our diversity, working together and celebrating all cultures. In my role as a UK student recruitment manager at the University of Sheffield, on open days I've heard first-hand visitors saying what a friendly and welcoming city we are. The University of Sheffield has its own campaign, We Are International, that celebrates the diversity of university staff and students and shows commitment to the international community. The university alone has 117 countries represented by its staff and student population. There are over forty-five cultural and national student societies within the Students' Union. Sheffield's two universities play an important role in the development of the city's new cohesion framework. In the Burley Ward, I have examples of how the community came together to keep open our two libraries that are run by volunteers and now offer warm and welcome spaces for all. I'm also very proud of the development of the S12 Community Pantry set up earlier this year. They are a group of volunteers who have come together to ease food poverty in our area. They do this by having a social cafe, food surplus and meals available to those who are finding it hard to make hen's meat. It is managed by local volunteers who listen to what people want and need in our area. It has quickly become a community lifeline, offering much-needed support, activity and advice, and is used by anyone in Burley Ward and the wider community, and everyone is welcome. I'm happy to support this amendment and to continue encouraging our communities, partners and all of us here today in supporting the development of the city's new cohesion framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Can remember to switch our mics off after the talk. With the second amendment, we've got number two on the order paper councillor Lexie Diamond to move.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for the Lib Dems for bringing this motion, celebrating the diversity and unity of Sheffield's communities. A motion which, I must confess, came as a pleasant surprise and gives us the opportunity to add some meaningful resolutions. Last night, I had the privilege of watching a performance of the One World Choir, a choir made up of refugees and migrants from all over the world, including South Africans, Sudanese, Ukrainians, Iranians and many more nationalities represented, with every member a Sheffielder. One song written by a member features the lyrics, "I feel alive and home". If you haven't seen One World Choir, please tune into the One Show on Wednesday the thirteenth, which will feature the highlights of their performance, flying the flag for Sheffield unity. Sheffield truly is a city of sanctuary, a beacon of solidarity, union and hope. And it has been heartening to see Sheffield's of all faiths and none, including almost every member of this council, coming together to demand a ceasefire for Gaza, the most dangerous place in the world to be a child, where children have been killed at a rate far higher than any other conflict this century, including even the Syrian civil war. Residents have been demonstrating and fundraising, week in, week out, seeking to stop the bloodshed, even as our two biggest national parties and media do their utmost to manufacture consent for genocide and the UK government refuses to answer questions on whether it is materially supporting the carpet bombing of the largest concentration camp in the world, the world has ever seen rather. I truly hope this Lib Dem motion will ensure that there will be no more support for racist and misogynist comedians, opportunists campaigning against traveller families or posing for photos outside the offices of weapons manufacturers who create the refugees in this world. I hope also that you will support our amendment which seeks to enfranchise Sheffield residents who cannot vote, highlights the plight of refugees facing risk of homelessness in record numbers this winter and build momentum to overturn the ban on people seeking sanctuary.
Okay. Now councillor Henry Nottage to second the amendment, and this will be Henry's maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank my colleagues in the Liberal Democrats for bringing this motion celebrating diversity in our cities. To talk about all the obstacles facing our diverse communities would take far more than two minutes, so I'm going to talk about one. Work provides more than just simple financial remuneration, it gives a structure to our lives, a sense of purpose and satisfaction, and for people with dependents, a huge amount of pride in doing what you can to provide for those you love. To deny someone the right to work is to deny them all of those and more. And when that right is extended for great periods of time, it becomes a great cruelty. Currently, 124,000 people in the United Kingdom have been seeking asylum for more than six months, stuck in limbo. Some of these cases have been going on for more than a year. Not only is denying asylum seekers the right to work dehumanising for the individual, it's detrimental for our entire society. The Lift the Ban Coalition estimate the cost to the UK taxpayer at over £470 million a year in paid-out migrant relief, lost national insurance and lost income tax. The concept that people coming to the UK don't work voluntarily is misguided and fuels anti-immigrant sentiment leading to hatred and violence. Sheffield has a proud history as the first city of sanctuary, and we should continue this tradition. So I urge us all to support the motion, to support the amendments, and also to support the campaign launch for the Lift the Ban Coalition, taking place here at the town hall on the fifteenth of December. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. A couple of comments before I open the floor, that yes, I will be attending that rally. But also, and previous Lord Mayors will probably attest to this as well, one of the most heartening duties we perform as Lord Mayor is the citizenship ceremonies, where we welcome people from literally, well, not every continent, because we haven't done anybody from Antarctica yet, but every other continent in the world we welcome people from. And there's up to forty people at each of these citizenship ceremonies. And I do make the point about the city of sanctuary and what a welcoming place that Sheffield is, and going back to my comments at the previous meetings, how the different communities in Sheffield add to the life of the city and the vibrancy of the city. So just picking up on some of those remarks and abusing my position as Lord Mayor, but I wanted to make that point. Right, I've got councillor Dunn as the first speaker.
Sorry, gosh, sorry about that. Thank you, and thank you for bringing this motion to council. Lord Mayor, you've pinched part of my speech, I feel you were reading it there when I was trying to scribble a few things down. Diverse communities, far too often diverse communities are linked with a negative context, aren't they? Far too often, when actually it's Sheffield's strength. And I know that, not only personally, which I will share with you in a moment, but also as my role as a local councillor and in the lead roles that I've had. Actually, having the role of housing and cabinet member for communities and neighbourhoods was my proudest moment, because we led the way and we had to fight when refugees were getting a really bad name. So I was really proud of putting those policies in place, just standing up. But I'm saying this from a personal point of view, which I don't think many people know, is that my own family, on my son's father's side, fled here from Iran on horseback. They were smuggled out of the country from Iran so that they wouldn't be murdered and that they had a future. And they didn't see their family for absolutely decades. Can you imagine giving your children away so they would be safe? Now luckily, they landed here and saw some, Carol, they fell in love, and now I have the most amazing son called Tom from that, you know, he's part of my family. So to me, it's our strength, and it's something that as a councillor that I take forward when I go into my community, because far too often we fear what we don't understand. And part of our role as being a councillor is when we go into those groups and they're saying they don't understand, and is actually breaking down those barriers. And I know that every single one of us in this chamber today is doing that, and that is why I'm supporting our amendment, and thank you for bringing the motion.
Thank you. I'm looking around for other indications of people wishing to speak. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In supporting this amendment, I wanted to draw members' attention to the amazing work the tenants and residents associations across our city do in engaging and bringing our diverse communities together. In Walkby Ward, the TARA's there are doing brilliant work. In the last few months, there's been a newly constituted TARA in Netherthorpe, and I know the new TARA committee is especially proud of its diverse membership, and already this TARA has made a positive difference in their area. I really do love working with the Walkby TARA's. But I would get into trouble with them if I did not also mention the excellent TARA's at Edward Street Flats, Upper Thorpe and the Langseth Estate. I haven't got time to list all their wonderful community activities, but they do seaside trips, IT lessons, English classes and a sewing group. The TARA's across our city show how when we have diversity and representation, it makes for good decision-making and action that benefits our communities, and I ask you to support the Labour amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shafford to have it.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you colleagues for bringing this note to the motion. Lots of good comments about diversity. I think I want to just touch on the diversity that our universities bring. They bring people from all over the world together, many friendships are formed. I know I've got my friends from twenty years ago, all over the world, including one that works for Violia in France. So we need to celebrate that. I think I was really happy to join, I think councillor Hunt and others, to sign that pledge with the university that we actually welcome students from all over the world here. We've got two fantastic universities. And as I've said previously, I'm proud that we as a council, even the first UK city of sanctuary, that does say to refugees that it doesn't matter who you are, where you're from, if you fall on hard times, we as a city will welcome you. And for me, diversity, Lord Mayor, is also about diversity of opinions and actually allowing other people to disagree with you, allowing them to have an alternative opinion. And that for me is okay. You know, I disagree with colleagues across the chamber there, but that's fine, because that's difficult political opinion, doesn't take it personal, I don't take it personally, I don't impose it upon them. I hope that my power of persuasion might get them to see the errors of their ways, and I'm sure they'll think likewise. So for me, diversity works in many forms, that there are, may well be, people that hold views that might be different from you. That doesn't mean they're wrong, actually, that's their opinion and we should accept it, especially for me as a being a minority, for many things, minority faith, minority ethnicity, I have to also speak out for those very small communities that often feel very isolated and pushed out of the way because they don't have a loud voice and maybe not represented in this chamber at the moment.
Thank you. We're coming up to time, I've actually already got three speakers who want to contribute, which will probably take us a little bit over time. I'll take the three that I've got, if they promise to be quite brief. Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm just going to talk about a microcoven of neighbourliness in Sheffield, because I was going to talk about the best road in Sheffield, which is Lion Street in Burngreeve. And I was just going to talk about the very Sheffield-ness of my street. When I first moved in with Howard, the neighbours knew he had a Welsh girlfriend, weren't quite sure about the strange name she had. So every Christmas, we had a very nice Christmas card to Howard and Mavanoi. But I always thought they were making the effort, they knew I had a strange name and it was fine. My neighbour, directly next to me, Trudy, two small children the same time that I had Dan, I absolutely floundered as a first-time mother. Trudy was the person that just kept me going, because she just did motherhood so effortlessly and dragged me along in her wake, and I'm really, really grateful to her. And then opposite, we have Trudy's sister, Natalie. Now, if you come to Lion Street at the moment, you'll have to bring dark glasses, because Natalie started decorating the outside of her house middle of November. Then the neighbours on one side have now done their house, and now the neighbours on the other side have done their house. And I hate to admit it, but it is better than the city centre. This is just neighbours who've got together and have just lit up the entire bit of Lion Street where I live, and it's absolutely fabulous. During lockdown, it was Natalie who also organised the games of bingo across the road so that we... so that we were all isolated but carried on playing bingo. And then at the moment, my neighbour on the other side, Nazma, is busy teaching Dan how to make proper curries because his mother's not very good at that. And those are the small things that I think make Sheffield, all those neighbours just getting along.
Yes, thank you. Anjot Jansky.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I promise I won't take the full whatever time I get given. I just want to say congratulations to my colleague councillor Nottage for his maiden speech. What a thing to do your maiden speech on and well done. As an immigrant to this country and as an immigrant to Sheffield 27 years ago, I just felt that I needed to say something. Sheffield is the most friendly place I have ever lived and I've lived in four different countries, even friendlier than Napoli in the south of Italy, which is my native place. But in Sheffield, you cannot be alone even if you want to be because you have to speak to someone that starts talking to you at the bus stop or on the bus or in a shop. And it is a very friendly place and proudly the first city of sanctuary. I think because we are that first city of sanctuary, we need to still, you know, speak up against this horrible government that now is brought up, you know, is bringing in legislation that means that people who have visas to this country to bring their family over, they have to earn over £38,000 and that's above the, you know, the median salary in this country. And it makes it virtually impossible even for people in really well-paid jobs not to be able to bring their families over. And I think it's cruel and unnecessary because it really damages the country. And, you know, we could have really good people coming to this country and contributing, we're not going to get them because of this stupid government that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, sorry, I forgot to congratulate you, Henry, that was just so rude of me.
Thank you, councillor Rudy, final speaker.
Thank you very much, my friend. And I was surprised, I was half expecting councillor Anjanati to stand up, but she's not, she's not here this afternoon. Buongiorno, come sta? I'll start the speech now. Basically, I was trying to get back to the myth that the Tories always propagate when they're in political trouble. They look for a scapegoat and this time the scapegoat is the people in the boats. They're trying to deflect the political heat that they're getting from everything else that they're doing back to the foreigners. It's the foreigners' fault. It's all those horrible people coming across in the small boats that are causing all the problems in this country. And as politicians across all parties, across the country and particularly in Westminster, we have to call that out for what it is, which is a lie. It is not down to those people. What they should be doing is actually concentrating on the evil people that put them in those boats and take money for putting their lives at risk. And what nobody ever asks the question, why is it that, what is it in that those people are running away from that is so horrible that they are prepared to risk death to get away from it? That's the debate that ought to be taking place and sending people out to find those people that are putting them in the boats.
Thank you. Councillor Masters, you have the right of reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To be quite honest, I think it's going to be easier to do than I expected because there seems to be general unanimity of what we stand for, what we want to achieve. But I will pick up on three items that have been mentioned. I mean, first of all, diversity of views. I don't think enough notice is taken of actually listening to each other and to people about us because as politicians, we work with people's perceptions, right or wrong, and we learn a lot from actually listening and hearing what they say, not just letting them speak and shouting them or shouting them down. Thank you, Sir Peter McLeary. The other thing is sort of about the travellers' community. I'm linking this with councillor Dunn's comments as well about education. Now councillor Mark Jones and myself attended a meeting with the Roma women. Now, we know that sort of Roma have got a very, very bad reputation in Sheffield and it was really refreshing to actually hear some things of such much, such positive work that they have been achieving in various aspects. You don't hear about the positives, but their main aim is to sort of reach out through education, which is what I think, yeah, councillor Dunn touched on, because it's fear of the unknown that sort of really sort of allows people to dive, to sort of, to cause problems within communities and to cause dissent. And the only way forward is education. They were a wonderful lesson about what is being achieved quietly under the radar. And I think it's just an example of everything else that is happening in this city. It's part of an international movement, but Sheffield was there. And it's a pity that more of us could not be present to attend there because it was worthwhile, wasn't it? So I'll finish on that and just commend our motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move to the vote on the two amendments and then the substantive. Amendment number one was the Labour amendment moved by Laura Moynihan. Do I have any dissent on that amendment? I take that that amendment is agreed in full. Agreed? Thank you. We now move to amendment number two. Is there any dissent on that one? This is the Green amendment. Dissent? Okay. Is there any voting in parts? Councillor Orton first then.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Voting for, we're abstaining on two, part four, and voting against three, part four.
Councillor Richards. Councillor Milson.
Lord Mayor, we're voting for but abstaining on two, part four, and voting against three, part four.
That seems a bit of unanimity in the voting patterns there. Okay, anything else from any other group? Okay, remember electronic voting. Log on first. So when it comes up, hang on, when it comes up, don't push anything. Right. Press on the blue button and the three colours will be lit up and you will know you voted when two of the colours become greyed out. How many should we have? Okay, there should be 72. I've got 71, 72, 72 have voted all in favour. Thank you, I think we can take that with the two. Everything is carried except for the three, part four, which was lost. The others were abstentions so that would get through, the other bits get through. Right, we're now moving to the vote on the substantive. Do I assume, to try and be quick, that your voting patterns will be exactly the same as they were on the amendments? Okay. We still need to run the electronic votes though. So can we clear the last vote off? I think there's two to log on to vote. We've only got 70 votes this time instead of 72, 71. So there we go, 72. Thank you. So that is carried. There was one part from the Green amendment that was lost in the amendment and then, so everything that was carried through has been carried because the other bits were abstaining. I hope that makes sense. So we are now, I'm going to take the break now and I'm going to give a bit longer than normal so people can go for a run round outside and warm up. And when we come back, we'll take the tributes to, as I said before, to Vicky and others. Shall we say let's come back at five to four? That gives 13, 14 minutes, five to four. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for joining me. As I indicated at the start of the meeting, we're now going to pay tributes to former colleagues, Vicky Briesley, Diana Steinle and I could...
Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Before I talk about my friend and colleague Vicky, I'm going to just mention my former colleague and friend Diana Steinle, who I worked with when we were both councillors for Ecclesall. She was quite a remarkable force, Miss Diana. She knew what she wanted and she went for it. And she didn't always get it, but it was a high percentage that she achieved and I'd like to express my condolences to her family. My friend Vicky, still can't believe she's not here. I've known her for so long, I can't remember not knowing her and I wasn't going to do this. But she was first elected to Bradfield Parish Council actually in 1999. She had a few months less than 25 years as a parish councillor. She knew it inside out, the whole of the parish. She was chair of the parish four times and achieved quite a lot. She was a very community-based person. The ward under the parish were her family. She spent an awful lot of time caring for her family. She didn't suffer fools gladly. She was a dedicated Sheffielder and she coiled a spade a shovel. She believed in democracy, she believed in people's rights and she believed in individuals. If you look at the friends she has and the number of friends she has, a lot of them that she's made through being a local councillor, you'll see what a good friend she is. Because as they always say about somebody, you can tell what a good friend they have by how many friends they have. And Vicky was one of those. When Vicky and I were together in the ward, we used to, every summer, make a point of going out into the rural areas and we would visit the farms and David would always drive us. So we'd get to the gate and we'd go down the gate and it might be a mile, half a mile, two miles even sometimes. You'd drive up to the door, the farmer had come out with the dog, always the dog, she didn't like dogs, the dogs, and he'd come out and you'd think, oh heck. And it'd walk towards you and you can guarantee his first words would be, hello, Vicky. She knew everybody. She'd done something for everybody. She, you know, put herself out, she asked after their family. She was part, so much part of the community that it was difficult to say where she was. The community finished and her family started. She has always, always been straight. She would never, ever allow anybody to take her off the true path. She worked hard as Lord Mayor to work with all sorts of different communities and organisations. She was a member of Taptown Ladies, which raised thousands and thousands of pounds for charities in Sheffield. A lot of these things, a lot of you won't even know. I think things came to a halt with us when we struggled last year with the gas flood. For this time last year, we were all three charging around the ward, getting to people as fast as we could. I'd never believed that I would represent a ward that had British Red Cross knocking on the doors in it. But the situation was so bad that it did. We'd go out from morning till evening and a story that really tells you just who Vicky is, was, is one evening, we'd been out and it was freezing cold and icy and Shaffack had dropped us off and she'd gone home. And about three quarters an hour later, she burst into my front door, ordering me to put my coat on and telling me, we've got to go now because Janet needed us. And there was a lady in her eighties in the community who had recently had a knee replacement operation and found herself home alone with no heat and no hot water, even though the rest of the street had had its power returned. So we went out to see her and we went up to Lomas Hall and by courts ten that night, she was warm and she had hot water. Vicky never said, we'll do it in the morning. We didn't do anything in the morning that we couldn't do the night before. I could go on for a long time about Vicky, but I'm just hoping that her brother and her brother-in-law, who live in Australia, who are trying to log into this, can pick up from us just what an important lady she was, just how fond of her we are and how much good wishes and sympathy we give to them. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can I just say one more thing, which I was intending to say, but I lost my track like you do. Vicky and I were absolutely delighted when we got the statues to the Women of Steel outside the city hall. We thought it was an absolute delight. And I think people like Vicky should be known as the modern day Women of Steel. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Not sure how I'm going to follow that, but I'll give it a go. Looking around the chamber today, it is quite clear that there were many members and many officers who have known Vicky for a much longer period than I have. I only met Vicky four years ago, pre-pandemic. But I like to think that what I lack in quantity, I'd make up for in the quality of time I spent with her. I first met Vicky, as I've said, four years ago and from that first moment, she went out of her way to welcome me and make me feel part of the Stalington team. When I was elected to represent the Stalington Ward, she was very supportive. I was part of that class of 21 whose first introduction to the council was at Pons Forge due to the Covid restrictions. Now as Chair of the community's Parks and Leisure, I actively promote this venue as a world-class sporting facility. However, as a venue for full council meetings, it had its challenges. At best, it felt like an exam room; at worst, it felt like sitting in detention. Your first full council meeting is always daunting and Vicky had clearly picked up that I was nervous. She sat one row ahead of me and five to the right, I can see it now, strategically placed to keep an eye on me, I'm sure. Before the meeting started, she breezed over and offered me the following advice. When I stand up, you stand up. When I sit down, you do the same. When it comes to voting, when I stick my arm up, so do you. A good advice got me through that first meeting and subsequent ones and through the whole Pons Forge experience and we quickly became good friends. I picked up quite quickly that I don't think Vicky particularly liked... I picked up quite quickly that I don't think Vicky particularly liked the formality and the nature of full council meetings. It was not her idea of being a councillor. For her, that was about casework, talking to residents, listening to residents, and helping them deal with their problems and issues. And yet ironically, I'm told that she was an outstanding and first-class Lord Mayor, dealing with this circus, but also enjoying the many community events that are part of the role. On Friday, we all have the opportunity to pay our last respects to Vicky, and it is fitting that the venue will be Sheffield Cathedral. It's the least she deserves. She will be missed, not just by the Lib Dem group, but across this chamber. She will be missed certainly in Stannington Ward, but I think also across Sheffield. But most of all, she will be terribly missed by Lloyd, her husband, and her family, both near and far. And it's to them that we should turn our thoughts and offers of support. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
As it was then, we were helping out in that campaign. But what I was acutely aware of knowing Vicky, and I was, I reminded, I met, Karen, me and Karen went down to Old Denise, came after when she was in Northern. And we still went to see her. She was still her own normal, fighting, bouncing self, she was. And it was a pleasure to spend some time with her. Diana Leek was dear and old, so it was quite reminiscent. But it was Vicky that showed me across this chamber that no matter what the knockabout, the punching duty stuff that goes off here, but realistically, we were all in it for the same reasons, to make people's lives better. Market, just on Castle Market at Topley. And I'd gone in for some ribbon, being a big tough miner, why wouldn't you go in for some ribbon? And I hadn't got a clue where we are, and I just heard this voice, as rough as they could be to be actually, and it were Vicky, who took me all the way through that. But we became good friends where, every now and again, no matter what position I ever held in this council, she was a good barometer, because she'd tell me if I were doing right, and she'd let me know if I were doing right, and if I were doing wrong. And she would tell me in Vicky's own way that she would. And we really got to know Vicky and that when she became Lord Mayor, when she really shone, I think. Because from not knowing people, being on either a scrutiny committee or a planning committee in this place, you never really get to know them. But certainly as Lord Mayor would, you really got to know. And to know how she affected certainly, not only Stannington but Bradfield as well. I mean, I could never get past Nagsierd, but she and Lloyd were all over in Bradfield. And she was able to connect with whatever audience she was with. And my last real time with her in the community, because that's where she was embedded. And it was just before the Stannington issue, when we had a few late nights up there and walkabouts, etcetera. Was in Low Edges. And what you didn't see was she was such a great craftsperson and teacher. And I've still got in carnage a little flower that she made for me while we were just holding courts and we were working with this community group up at Low Edges. And the way that she connected was just unbelievable. So understated, so very underlying. She just cracked on, but she was held in such high regard. I'll certainly miss her. I'm really glad we've got Sheffield Cathedral, because I think it's a real fitting venue. Condolences obviously to Lloyd. I had a quick word with his daughters when we were at Palatine Care Unit. But it would be good to at least have an opportunity to express my condolences personally to the family. So, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Karen Jones.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's so sad that we're having to do this today. I was thinking back to when I first met Vicky and when she became a friend. And I think it was when she was Lord Mayor, I was telling her about my friend that worked for the Sixth Children's Trust at the Children's Hospital. For anybody that doesn't know, we're really lucky in Sheffield that if our children are ill, we're here. But there's so many people and families that come from all over, from Ireland and everywhere, and have their children in there for two, three, four months, six months, and have nowhere to stay when they're here. So there is a trust where they provide bedrooms and kettles and all the facilities you need to stay. And I was just telling her about it, and that they were looking for facilities. And she said to me, get her to put a bid into my Lord Mayor's fund, because I'll sort it. And she did. You know, she provided with kettles, toasters, everything. So that's when we first became friends, I think. I think one of the main qualities that I liked about Vicky was that I trusted her. She didn't play, score points or anything politically. So anything that I told her or anything we did, we had truthful conversations and I trusted her with it. And she was so supportive to me when we went out to chair a speech at Rhino case, when I was Chair of Licensing. I'd not been Chair very long, I think I'd started in May, and I think we did it in something like September. And I was absolutely bricking it, to be honest. The TVs were here, it was a whole day case. But she was brilliant. You know, she just made me laugh, she made me feel comfortable, she was so supportive. So I've got some great memories of how she got me through that. And I always wondered, when we went to the town, what the press would make. But every time I saw her, she always hugged me. I hugged her, and it was, good luck. And everything, we're there with opposing rosettes on. So, you know, I always wondered what people made of that. But yeah, what Terry said about her not, she's one of the ones that shows you that you can be friends if we don't have to be enemies, just because we've got a different point of view. So this place isn't going to be the same without her. My heart goes out to her family and friends, and all of you across the other side that have worked with her for so long. Thank you.
Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I knew Vicky through our time working on the Licensing Committee. And even though our professional paths barely intertwined in those short moments, it was clear to see Vicky's dedication, passion, and collaborative spirit. And this left an indelible mark on myself, a reminder that even brief encounters can resonate really deeply. Vicky was always professional and was always willing to give people a chance for more walks of life, from the good to the bad, and from the haves to the have-nots, including myself. In the brevity of our connection, Vicky sparked curiosity that still remains. A testament to the profound impact of every individual we encounter, no matter how briefly. Rest in peace, Vicky.
Julie Groger.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like Richard, I only knew Vicky for the last four years. But what springs to mind most about her is when I was out and about in my ward in Utter Bridge, I would often see Vicky out and about in her parish in Utter Bridge. And we'd stop on the street and we'd have conversations and we'd talk to people. And over the last few months while she's been unwell, it's, I think, a true testament to her, the number of people in Utter Bridge across the parish who have stopped me and spoken to me and said, have you heard this about Vicky? Do you know how Vicky is? Because she truly was loved, and she truly will be missed. She had a very rare quality about her, in that you always knew when she was there, but she never had an awful lot to say. But you really listened to her when she did, because what she said was straight-talking. It was absolutely spot on the money, and you knew that you had to listen to what she said and take that on board. One of the last conversations I had with her was actually on a cold winter night, about 12 months ago now, in a very chilly community hall, a little bit like here today. And, you know, she said, Julie, can you believe at our age, you're out at this time of night in this weather, doing this? And I just laughed and went, yes, Vicky, she went, cirque night's great, isn't it? And we were talking about, you know, the stuff that we were doing on the like, and the members of the community that had come along to the meeting. And she absolutely loved the grassroots work. And I think Penny, you summed it up beautifully when you said she's a woman of steel, because she truly is a woman of steel. You know, her strength over these last few months has shown that. Her dedication to her community and the work that she has done, not just in the north of Sheffield, but across the city, as we've heard when she was Lord Mayor, and the committees that she's sat on over the years. She is a woman who's been taken from us far too soon. I also had the pleasure of knowing her and her husband through golf, which is something else that we shared and had in common, which was nice and took us away from the politics. But she really will be missed, and she will be a hard act to follow. And I do offer my very sincere condolences to everyone who loved, admired, and worked with Vicky. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Alan Hooper.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to begin this opportunity to pay tribute to councillor Vicky Priestley. Many councillors here today will not have the opportunity to pay tribute. I hope my words and the words of other councillors do actually cover their thoughts and memories of Vicky. Vicky was elected to Bradfield Parish Council in 1999, the same time as I was elected to Ettlesworth Parish Council. And I believe in 2004, she was elected to Stannington as well. So our paths have married for the last 25 years. Vicky, in her past, was a member of the North Area Panel, for those of you who can remember panels, the North Community Assembly, and latterly, she's been Vice Chair of the North Local Area Committee. Vicky was a friend and colleague, a dedicated ward councillor, a respected local champion. I was out in Worrall yesterday, and two men and one spoke to me, and the conversation turned to Vicky. And their words were, she was a steely woman, the steely woman keeps coming up, but with a heart of gold, a heart of gold. That was Vicky. Vicky was a very talented lady. She was involved with the Bradfield Music Festival, and she was a fantastic cake maker and decorator. I make wedding cakes, but don't decorate them. So who decorates them? Vicky. One, what she made and decorated for me, I supplied her with a three-tier wedding cake, fruitcake, and she decorated it for me. The task for me was to get it down to Richmond, because the wedding was in Richmond Park, in one of the lodgers. So I had to transport a fully decorated wedding cake in the boot of my car to Richmond. I think I actually messaged Vicky to say, it's here and safe. But when that was delivered, that was fantastic. But she not only got that, and as Terry said about the story, I'd forgotten about that. It was in the old market, not only haberdashery, but cake decorations and all the cake stuff. And you used to go and visit her. Finally, I would like to say about the remembrance, and I did go and see her when she was in Palatine Care. And I took some of the brochures that we had from the North Panel with her picture on. And I also took some photographs, which was taken at the Stannington party. It was a party that celebrated for the families, sort of coming out of the flood and the emergency. And many families were there. So I've got pictures of Vicky, myself, and I think it's gringy, is it? And I actually showed her that, and I really got a laugh from her when she was suffering. But God bless Vicky. Thank you.
Shaffer.
This is really difficult, isn't it? You know, we've lost a friend, someone that, you know, I've known for 25 years, felt like part of our family, if I'm being honest. And my heart goes out to Lloyd, Stacey, and Tor, and the families in Australia, because I beloved Vicky P, because that's what she was doing amongst us all. Is no longer with us. And she was a woman of steel. She showed that last year, despite her illness. I remember being on the streets of Stannington with her. And I have to say, no disrespect to colleagues here, but she was the quickest up those hills.
Yeah, she was.
And, you know, I had an opportunity to be in Stannington recently, last week actually, and somebody came out, I think it's near Little Matlock Road, I think it is or something, and just come up to me to, excuse me, didn't I speak to you last year? And I said, you might have. He said, no, I did. You came round with Vicky Priestley, because he'd suffered from the gas floods. And he said to me that he'd be coming to the funeral. So there's just not going to be politicians and the good and the great of Sheffield. Actually, the people that Vicky spent most of the time with, which was the people of Stannington and Worpia, etcetera. And for me, you know, I had the opportunity to go and see her. And Terry and Julie are right, that she didn't say much. But I tell you what, when she said something, you listened. Because I did, because she was one of my biggest supporters, Mike Rock. And I listened to her, and I got the occasion of telling off. And it's sometimes needed, if I'm being honest. And the first time I went to see her at Macmillan, I sat down for five minutes, and then she said, oh, where have you parked? And I said, actually, I'm got a lift with Adele, he's outside. And she said, what have you left him outside for? Get out there and go and bring him. So I went and got my son, and I sat down, and basically Vicky ignored me and spoke to him about his paramedics and everything else. And as we left, she said to me, you know, Aisha, she's also my princess. So next time you come, bring her with you. And then we met Stacey and Tor, and we had a huddle. And we, you know, we knew life was going to be difficult. But I tell you what, Vicky always said, it doesn't matter how many days I've got, let's keep fighting. And, you know, I'm incredibly proud that so many of you spoke today. Friday's going to be difficult, but I know we'll get over it. And I'm sure, Lord Mayor, when you host all the guests there, that we've got that opportunity to say the final goodbye and pass on our personal condolences to Lloyd, Stacey, and Tor again. So thank you for the opportunity, Lord Mayor. Sorry, sometimes big tall blokes do get a bit emotional sometimes.
Thank you for all of you who've spoken so eloquently about, dear Vicky, I'm using those words advisedly. It just shows that in the body politics, that we may have different views on how to get there, but we all want to get to the same end point, perhaps by different routes. And we recognise the good in people, and certainly the good in Vicky. Yeah, what's been said sums it up. The last time I saw Vicky in the Northern General, and just sat, holding hands, and she said, it's crap, isn't it? Yeah, it is crap. But that's the way it is. And I hope the words that have been spoken today, and Lloyd and the family have been watching, can bring some comfort and let them know just how much Vicky was loved and respected right across the chamber. And I know that because officers haven't got my voice, but I know that goes for officers as well, because quite a number of officers and past Lord Mayors, I mentioned John Campbell actually, because he overlapped with Vicky as deputy and so on, wanted to be included in the remembrance and offices as well. So thank you. I'll just take a moment before we move on to item eight on the business. Okay, actually, the Archer Project collection raised £261.24. Where the £24 came from, I've no idea. But let us move on now, item eight on the business, the notice of motion regarding 13 years of Conservative government failure. There is a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for this item. And I believe it's here and now, is going to move this motion, and you may speak for up to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On this side of the chamber, we recognise the enormity of the challenges that face us in local government. The Tories have yet again failed for Sheffielders, broken... The Tories have yet again failed for Sheffielders, broken promises yet again. My belief in a newly elected Labour government to restore stability in public services is stronger than ever. Lord Mayor, we won't let the government forget their 13 years of underfunding and mismanagement of our NHS, as well as their failure to pay and treat staff fairly. This is one of the biggest causes of rising waiting lists. Only now are the parties in this chamber fully appreciating the impact government cuts have had on council services. After 13 years of Tory austerity, with Sheffield starved of funding, we are facing rising inflation and increase in demand of social care, which is one of the biggest areas of council spending. We deserve better. For over a decade, Sheffield Labour councillors have been prioritising vulnerable and tackling inequalities. We have always put Sheffielders at the heart of everything we do and will continue to do so by protecting our public services, by protecting services for the most vulnerable, by growing the local economy and by securing more investment. The cuts in funding fall hardest on local people. In the most deprived areas, increasing inequalities. Each week, I speak to renters threatened with eviction, homeless people struggling to survive, families using food banks, older people having to decide between heating and eating, single parents having to miss meals to provide for their children. This is Tory Britain and enough is enough. We all also know that through the Autumn Statement, thousands of people on disability benefits will lose an extra £5,000 a year. The list is endless. In 2020, I set up a Donald Food Bank. Lord Mayor, it pains me to share that the number of food bank users have tripled. I hear sad stories each and every day of difficult choices families have to make. These are the consequences of austerity which started with the Lib Dem and Tory coalition. In Labour government, a Labour government will put Sheffield back to where it belongs and show the Tories what real levelling of peace. I formally move this motion, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Can I call upon councillor Tony Downing to second the motion? You may speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to Henry Notte on his remarkable speech this afternoon. 13 years of Conservative government failure, and let's not forget, aided and abetted by the Liberal Democrats, has led to councils in the North, like Sheffield, having to make decisions that are unpalatable and not what any of us came into this chamber to do, to politics, to do. This council has 856 per household less to spend in real terms compared to 2010, 2011. These cuts are well above the national average of 20% or £581 per dwelling, while some wealthy councils in the South have only seen a reduction of 8%. Why, only last week, we saw Nottingham Council declare bankrupt. Living standards have fallen to an all-time low and taxes have risen and more and more people are losing their jobs. And those who are working are having to use food banks to feed their families because they are not earning enough. The longest NHS waiting list in history, huge cuts to police forces, inmates are escaping overcrowded prisons and unsafe schools are crumbling. Although you can bet Eton, Harrow and Winchester won't be among them. A damning indictment of this government's time in office. Lord Mayor, local authorities like ours are struggling because of years of underinvestment in health and social care, homelessness and housing. The further damage done during the premiership of List Truss and the audacity of Lord Cameron backing the cabinet after the damage his government caused to our city and the country adds insult to injury and a kicking the teeth to the people of Sheffield. Lord Mayor, distraught members of the public are coming to my surgeries and my inbox is full of issues caused by the incompetence of this government. Constituents in parts of my ward are struggling to feed their families, heat their homes and keep the lights on, and the Autumn Statement has done nothing to ease their pain. We need a change now. We need a Labour government to rebuild our country and city to deliver the economic growth we need to create more jobs with proper pay and get our public services back on their feet after 13 years of desperation.
Thank you very much.
I second the motion.
There are three proposed amendments, numbers three, four and five on the list of amendments circulated. And can I now call on councillor Robries to move amendment number three? And again, you've got up to two minutes to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to also congratulate councillor Notte on his barnstorming opening address to this chamber. This Labour motion does a very good job of criticising the current Tory government for what it has done to Sheffield. But there is a woman that has done immeasurable damages to the communities of South Yorkshire and the industry that I work in, a woman that, according to Starmer, had admirable traits. Does councillor Hunt agree with this leader? Or does he other traits that he admires more? The admiration goes in the other direction as well. Thatcher stated her greatest legacy was Tony Blair and New Labour, a project that Starmer wants to emulate. In the October meeting of this council, it was said that a vote for Labour was a vote to end austerity. This apparently didn't get back to councillor Peter Mason in Milbank as only a few days later, a Labour MP failed to commit to more funding for local councils. This was doubled down upon by their leader on Monday when Starmer said that Labour would not turn on the funding taps for services. So is it only austerity when someone else does it? But fiscal responsibility when it is of their own design? Labour's motion mentions a Green Prosperity Plan, a plan that has already been watered down once already. Are we going to see any more of the pledges listed in their motion, dropped or watered down following a by-election loss or a Telegraph article? This inability to commit to a position isn't reserved for policy. When I swirched the web for 10 pledges made by Starmer during his leadership bid, all I came across is a site that said 404, page not found. So I propose that we support as a council policies that will make real change to South Yorkshire, proper devolution rather than a glorified city deal, a target for building social homes, a rebuilding of our relationship with Europe rather than just making Brexit work, a climate-focused industrial strategy that spreads prosperity around this country and a fair tax system. But more importantly, these policies were voted on democratically by Liberal Democrat members rather than cooked up in backroom meetings to be watered down with politically convenient. Thank you.
Councillor Roger Davidson, second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First of all, can I congratulate Henry on his maiden speech? I think among the hubbub we tend to forget, but well done. There's nothing like a pious motion, is there? Nothing like a pious motion. We like a bit of fisty cuffs, don't we? Verbal fisty cuffs. And it does display some economic amnesia along the way, fed by party propagandists. But thankfully, we live in a democracy where we can debate issues and show that there are more than one side to a question. Let us just remind ourselves of what Alistair Darling and the Chief Secretary to the Treasury, Byrne, said in 2010. There were serious problems then, very serious problems. And Darling said, there would have to be restrictions in public spending on a level not previously encountered. We don't know where they would be. But of course, thankfully for the Labour Party, they lost the election so they could blame somebody else. And of course, we're very fond of the blame culture in politics, aren't we? As one Labour member observed. But he forgets that it sometimes applies to his own party too. I must just also remind you that the tax thresholds increased substantially, which actually brought a lot of people into work because it stopped people, it got people out of the poverty trap because people weren't going to work because they were losing benefits. They lost less. In fact, they gained as a result of the thresholds. And employment actually rose substantially during that time. The triple lock, now it may not be appropriate now, I don't know, it's an arguable point. But at that time, it was very important for pensioners to get increases well above inflation. And these are the greatest increases, I might say, in real terms that pensioners have received.
Okay, can you bring your remarks to the conclusion now?
Oh, wow, I've got loads to say.
Councillor Davidson, you haven't got loads to say, I'm afraid.
I know, okay, okay. So I'll just finish by saying, yes, it's a pity we've got List Truss.
Thank you, thank you, Roger. We now move on to amendment number four and councillor Paul Turpin.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Well done, Henry. So, yeah, I agree with quite a lot of what's been said. It has been a crap 13 years under the Tory government. But it's incredibly rich to come from Labour when, I mean, wood anything up indifferent. 2010, Alistair Darling, we'll have to cut and they'll have to cut deeper than Thatcher. Brown having lunch dates in number 10. And of course, we all remember that you always agreed with Nick. 2015, pro-austerity, pro-tridem, pro-fracking, pro... Whatever the other one was, I'm not checking. No difference, no difference whatsoever. 2023, mirroring everything the Tories do, mirroring immigration. On the anti-protest bill, on the anti-strike bill. Keir Thatcher, oh, done it again. Keir Starmer. Now, I've spoke to loads of people about Keir Starmer and, you know, a lot of them are very hopeful. They hope he's lying. Because there's no difference between them. You can't get a Rizla between the Labour today and the Tories. The other thing about this motion is it's all about national stuff. This is Sheffield, we're councillors, we're not in Parliament. I know a lot of you would like to be in Parliament. I can tell you're ambitious, but you're not ambitious for Sheffield. You're ambitious for yourselves. What about the local levers that we could pull? Like the workplace parking levy? Nottingham, 80-odd million pound in 10 years. A further 600 million pound in 10 years on top, nearly 700 million pound. You talk about you want to do something with the buses. They've got a load of electric buses, electric taxis, extended the tram network, built a new train station. It's a miserable time when the only prospect of getting rid of the Tories is to replace them with their reflection.
Thank you. Councillor Brian Homshor to second the amendment.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Lord Mayor. We all know about the cuts in Sheffield City Council over the decades. But how do we get out of this bind in Sheffield? How do we invest and maintain in vital transport, care homes, libraries and education? There is one answer. We've heard about the bus franchising assessment earlier today, about extending the tram and the bus network, very ambitious. The real question it raises for me is how any programme of investment in public transport is going to be paid for. We need to know whether the employer's workplace parking levy is going to be included in that franchising assessment because it needs to be. Without increased funds raised locally through a workplace parking levy dedicated to public transport, those ambitious plans are just not going to be able to be funded, are they? We could establish a wholly owned council company to help deliver other councils' objectives, to raise income, to deliver reliable services for Sheffield residents, such as gardening, household repairs, heating system servicing and replacement and retrofit works. A similar project was established in Oxford and raised £600,000 services this year, 2023. We could invest in renewable energy projects on council land and buildings to generate our own energy and our own income, not relying on government. Cambridgeshire County Council will soon be receiving £1 million each year from a solar farm it has developed. Those are the local ideas. Those are what we should be investing in right now. Thank you.
We now move on to amendment number five and it's councillor Brian Lodge to move the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations, councillor Notte, on your maiden speech today. The focus of the Labour Group is evident for all to see, the upcoming general election. Everything's directed towards retaining Hallam and winning Stockbridge and Penyston. When South East councillors spoke out against the proposals for the site on Ekkington Way in the local plan, we were told that we must get the plan adopted to protect Hallam and Stockbridge. We made representations on behalf of the communities in the South East with all the Labour members and the Lib Dems on the South East Lake supporting their communities oppositions to the plans. We warned that this could result in the loss of seats in Burleigh, in Mosborough, in Woodhouse and Richmond. Labour's already given up on baiting down there. But we were told, whilst this is unfortunate, Sheffield South East was a safe seat and we had to win Hallam and Penyston and Stockbridge. So it's hardly surprising that Labour used as their first notice of motion this month to attack the record of the Tory government since 2010. But what makes this even more staggering is in this same week, the leader of the Labour Party comes out in praise of Margaret Thatcher. It was under premiership that 44 years ago next month, we saw the National Steel Strike that ultimately led to the loss of 50,000 steel and engineering jobs in Sheffield over the next four years. In 1984, it was the turn of the miners to see thousands lose their jobs, communities destroyed with divisions that are still evident today and their industry wiped out. Deregulation of the buses saw a public transport system that was the envy of the country systematically destroyed, leaving us in the position that we see today. This month again, we've seen huge cuts to services, communities cut off and isolated, rising fares and first South Yorkshire profits in the millions. Many of Sheffielders this winter will once again face the dilemma of heat or eat due to soaring energy costs. Companies that used to be publicly owned but privatised by Thatcher are now making millions in profits for shareholders. Did Labour do enough under Tony Blair and Gordon Brown to address these matters? Of course not. They could and should have done more. But at least they didn't utter offensive comments that praised her for what she did. To coin a phrase that was used in the privatisation of British gas.
Thank you.
When it comes to Keir Starmer's comments and thoughts on Thatcher, if you see Sid, tell him.
Julie Gruel-Cott to second the amendments.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'd like to start by offering my congratulations to councillor Notte on your very important maiden speech. Well done. The Labour motion tells us what we already know. It's about the national political picture and its sweeping statements. It offers nothing to the people of Sheffield to let them know what practical help either Labour or the council is offering. Many struggling families receive help and support from volunteers and community organisations. I would like to thank both the volunteers in my ward and across the city for the generous contribution they make to the welfare of the people of the city. In Stockbridge and Upadon, from running food banks and community shops to offering advice on debt and energy suppliers to assisting with health and social isolation, the list goes on. And we are fortunate to have such a broad range of volunteer support. As Sheffield councillors, we should be championing what we are doing locally and ensuring our communities have access to the support that they need. It is therefore baffling why Labour are indulging in the national issues at this time. And I wonder how Sheffield Labour can criticise the Conservative government when Keir Starmer is publicly praising Margaret Thatcher, the longest-serving Tory Prime Minister in modern times. I second the amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the debate on the matter. I've probably got more speakers indicated than we've got time for at the moment. But can we start with Janet Riddler, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And again, congratulations, councillor Notte, on your maiden speech. Lord Mayor, the Conservative government has failed Sheffield. Our city council has been shamefully neglected and has suffered savage and disproportionate funding cuts. And it's the people of Sheffield who are paying the price. Under this Conservative government, the gap between the richest and the poorest in our city has widened and continues to do. And cynically targeted the most vulnerable in our communities, meaning that in Sheffield we have people living in poverty, people for whom each day is a struggle, for whom the choice is between eating and heating, whose children are growing up in inadequate living conditions, people who are falling ill and dying prematurely due to the chronic underfunding and dismantling of the National Health Service. Under this Tory government, the concept of food banks has almost become normalised, with two and a half million food parcels handed out in Britain last year, a direct result of political choices. Sheffield deserves better, and this will only be achieved by a Labour administration committed to protecting public services and to growing the economy. The Labour Party is committed to social justice and the fight against inequality. When Labour wins the general election next year, we will be picking up the pieces from over a decade of misrule and will have the task of rebuilding a broken society for the many who have lost hope for the future. So I would urge opposition parties to support this motion, particularly the Liberal Democrats who may wish to make amends for the five years they spent in coalition government alongside the Tories, supporting and implementing austerity policies. Labour have consistently fought to improve the lives of the most vulnerable in our city, and this will always be our priority.
Shaffa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and it's really interesting debate, and it shows some interesting dividing lines between the Labour family, I would say, in terms of the Margaret Thatcher Appreciation Society that I see at the far right hand side. They seem to have short memories, I'm surprised Peter, for you of all people, the memories of the nineteen eighties are quite vivid for me. Decimation of the steelworks, free school meals, free clothing and the name calling that we as those that were on free clothing got when we were at secondary school, because we were marked out. Everyone who got free clothing from Leopard Street, we had the same jackets, the same sweatshirts. So I don't know what planet Keir Starmer's on when he thinks that he needs to admire Margaret Thatcher. Maybe, you know, the Campaign Improvement Board is really not working for Sheffield, that somehow they seem to take Sheffield for granted, it seems, that don't worry about Sheffield, we can admire Margaret Thatcher because we've already got Sheffield in the bag. And that, for me, is the complacency, and we've heard that, you know, loud and clear about the attitude that Labour in Sheffield have about the South East, and they may have some surprises for them, they've got some surprises in Baiton last year, they may well have some more. But for me, Lord Mayor, it's clear now, whether it's a Conservative government or a Labour government under Starmer, the funding for local governments isn't going to get any better. And let's be honest, no matter what you say out there, no matter how much you're whipped, because if you don't tread the party line, you'll not be standing at the next local elections, you know, that is the thing that hangs over the Margaret Thatcher Appreciation Society on the other side here, that if you don't play ball to the national Keir Starmer project, then you'll no longer be part of it. And it's a really difficult one, but you know what, if Labour win, some of us are going to still be here. We will remind you about the speeches you've been making about all this unjust funding and when nothing comes back. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Douglas Johnson.
Right, well thanks everyone. Congratulations first of all to Henry Notte, who's actually had his third attempt to make a maiden speech, but Lord Mayor's finally let him talk this time, and it was a really good speech, so yeah, glad to hear that. I just want to bring it back to Sheffield a bit, and I was just thinking about Vicky Priestley, who we were so fondly talking about a few minutes ago. And I've just got this image now in my head of front, Vicky, you know, charging up the hills in Stanington, trying to get Penny to run fast behind her. And of course, you know, what we're saying about Vicky is that she was a really good walkout, so doing the things within the powers and actually getting results done. And this is where we are, we've got this mad conversation as if we're in Parliament, you know, we're not actually in Parliament now, this is Sheffield Town Hall. And I know it obviously stands to reason that parties are going to want to plug their own national parties in their manifestos for the general election that's not happening this week, but you know, this is a bit of a mad conversation, isn't it? I do take Shaffa's point that, you know, we're going to have to call this out, you know, when we get a new government in under whatever form of Tory government we have after the next general election, and just remind people what was said, but I mean, you know, in terms of pointless things there. The problem is, yeah, we're going to have a general election sometime over the next year, that's the only thing we know, but we don't even know who's going to be in which party by the time that happens, you know, the people seem to be shifting around all over the place. Just today, in the Independent this afternoon, there's an article there saying Jacob Rees-Mogg saying welcomes Keir Starmer into the Tory party, was this Jacob Rees-Mogg, you know? And I think all he wanted to do was get Keir Starmer just toned down some of his more extreme views on the right, and then, you know, Jacob Rees-Mogg will be happy. Yeah, this is all a bit mad really, but so I think I'll sit down.
Thank you. We've actually just slightly gone over twenty five minutes, there's three amendments, so there's less room for other speakers, so just got two minutes for us to hear and us to write a reply. To two minutes, it doesn't have to be the full time.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd also like to congratulate councillor Notte on his maiden speech, and I formally move this motion, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Right, we're now going to move to the votes on the amendments. The first one is the Lib Dem amendment, and unless there's unanimity. Any unanimity? No, no, well there you go. Electronic voting then. Voting in parts?
Yeah, voting in parts. So in voting for, I've got to make sure I do this right, in voting for, we're voting for paragraph one, but against the deletion of the sub paragraphs that it's proposing. We're voting against paragraph two and three, four for, for five again with four five, but we're against the deletions, and for six, just to mix it up, we're for the deletion, but we're not actually for the addition.
Okay, I'm sure Paul makes sense of that. Sophie.
Similar, it's a bit half and half, against the deletion of one but for the text, against two, three, four, five, and for six B, six D and six E, so I'll vote against.
Okay, thank you. Can we start the electronic voting now, please? I think I've just got one person left to vote. Right, the outcome of this is it's been passed, but in effect, Lib Dems voting for in full Greens, for, but what has happened now is whatever the Greens voted to carry forward gets carried forward and the rest is lost. Okay, right, let's go on to the next amendment, which was the amendment, whose amendment was that? It was the Green amendment, right. Voting in parts, Joe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In abstaining, we are voting for two, three brackets seven, three brackets eight, eight B, three brackets eight C, and against three brackets five, three brackets six and three brackets eight A.
It's really very straightforward, that one, okay. And any other voting in parts, Ruth?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting against, we shall be voting for one, open bracket, small v, I close bracket, and abstaining on three, I won't, five, six and seven. Three parts five, six and seven, Roman.
Okay. You can, if you've. It'll all come out in the wash, but it's most of the parts that they were expressing an opinion on was abstaining, so the convention is, that is what carries the day. Sophie.
In voting for, I'll be voting against three point five.
Okay, thank you, that's nice and simple. Can we now go to the electronic voting?
What's that counted, that's it? Because it's not gone just to yellow.
Oh yeah, it does, doesn't it?
All right, it does now, but they've had to change colour.
Okay, I think that's it. More votes against, well, in abstentions, but the net outcome of it was because of voting in parts, that we've carried part one for, part two, part three, seven, eight, B and C, I think, but Paul will put all this in the minutes. We now go on to the number six, which is the S C C. Lord Mayor, can we request a recorded vote, please? I see ten hands. Okay, that's a recorded vote. So any voting in parts on this? Is there unanimity on this? Oh, it's, no, it's recorded, so we've still got to do the electronic bit, yeah. Can we start that, please? Yeah, yeah. Two, two, three still to vote. Hang on. Three still to vote. It's two people, just look at your screen, if your three coloured lights are still on, you haven't voted. Right, that's it. That has been carried and that has been carried in full, that amendment. We now go to the votes on the substantive. Any voting in parts? Joe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Let me take my hat off and you can hear me properly. In voting for, we will be on, in part A, voting for our text but abstaining on the text from other parties that remains in that. In part B, we'll be voting for but abstaining on one and four sub clauses, which are the ones we tried to amend. In part C, we're voting for, but we're voting against the clause three that we tried to delete, and that's it, because the other bit we wanted to vote in part on has gone, so yeah, that's it. Other than that, we're voting on for part C, so there's only a couple of bits we're not voting for then.
Diane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to have to take advice from Paul on this, but in voting for this, we would be voting against the parts of the Green amendment labelled in their original amendment as one, A, seven. I can't remember whether it carried or not.
One, one with seven, that was lost.
Okay, in that case, there is no voting in parts, Lord Mayor, thank you very much.
And yeah, Ruth.
Do you want me to list all the parts, or should I just say as before?
As before.
Okay, Lord Mayor, we shall be voting for the substantive motion and against or abstaining on any part as previously declared, if they pass.
Sophie.
Same as what Ruth said, but against anything before and voting against it now.
Okay, can we move to the electronic voting? Okay, the upshot of that was, the substantive motion was passed with all the twiddles and fiddles in the various amendments, which Paul will put together and as before, check with the whips that we got it, got it right. Okay.
Can I just make a suggestion that we've got two nasty motions and councillor Wilson doesn't really get much opportunity to.
What I was going to suggest is this, that we've got time for nine, and if we're quick on that, I'll at least let Sophie make her speech to propose the motion.
Which is what I was going to suggest.
What is the, well, I didn't let him finish, that you would switch the.
Given our motion on vapes and the amendments seem pretty much kind of in favour, can we have a short debate just to allow?
Yeah, yeah, well, I think the outcome of that is that we will go through motion nine on the vapes but not overstretch it, so Sophie's got the chance, is that what you're saying? Go on.
Could I suggest, can I forward the suggestion that we move Sophie's motion?
You're putting forward a motion to change order of business.
Yes, that's what I'm doing, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Those in favour of the move to change order of business, please show.
Lord Mayor, so can we have a counter proposal before we take a vote?
We're going to use all the time on proposals, so if we don't.
I want to hurry up, but I just want to point out Labour Group has already given way once to a minority group motion and that other parties might want to consider that matter of fairness when.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
And that perhaps we could just take short speeches on proposals and on the original motion and amendments, cut the rest of the debate and then move on to Sophie.
Yeah, yeah, correct. I have a motion in front of me to change order of business. Those in favour of changing order of business, please show. Those against, please show. We're going to have to have a recorded vote on, an electronic vote, because it was too close to count. Can we show hands? Can those in favour, please stick their hands up very straight. Oh, hang on, they're all going, all right, we change order of business. Right, Sophie. We are now on item of business number 10. Notice motion regarding opposing minimum service levels. Sophie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Sheffield, for proposing that. And congratulations, councillor Nottingh, really moving speech. I've submitted this motion because I believe in the right to strike, the right to take industrial action against your employer without fear of retaliation or victimisation. Without this right, we are not free. I'd like to highlight point A three, which says that the Joint Committee on Human Rights has expressed concern that this legislation is not compatible with the UK's commitment to human rights for workers and trade union members. That should tell us all everything we need to know about this piece of legislation. There are also concerns around increasing the likelihood of blacklisting and actually prolonging disputes, a cynical attempt, in my opinion, to derail the widespread public support for the recent strike wave. It's disgraceful that in such a short space of time, this government has gone from, and to quote Keir Starmer actually, clapping to sacking our frontline workers. This government knows that we are stronger together. The underlying theme here isn't improving services, it's breaking us apart, weakening our solidarity, with the aim to create a society where masses of ordinary people have no ability to speak out about bad practice from their employer and are forced, through threat of homelessness and destitution, to accept unacceptably low pay. This government thrives on us being afraid of losing the crumbs that we are given. We need to stand together to do everything we possibly can to oppose this, to ensure Sheffield Council is not complicit in this attack on our rights, and ensure that Sheffield workers are free to take industrial action as and when they need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. There was an alteration to paragraph C1, you would see permission...
Can I formally propose the alteration? Thank you.
Can you let people know what it is?
Just a slight rewording, because the motion I submitted wasn't able to go forward to add in the words, including the discretion not to issue work notices.
Okay, thank you. I am formally seconding the motion. We now go on to the three proposed amendments, which are seven, eight and nine. So Peter Price.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I never thought I'd, well, I didn't think I'd have to go in this chamber once again to defend the rights of trade unions against the Tory government. I mean, I go back to the long time when Myrtle Foot introduced the first industrial relations to protect trade unions, and Thatcher thrashed it. And then I thought we'd come to some sort of compromise and settlement on trade union rights and abilities. But it seems to me there's never, how low this government can sink in trying to get the public support. They've clearly had a go at the people seeking asylum seekers. They've had a go at people who's laying on the street, telling them it's their lifestyle. They've reduced benefits. And now they're telling trade unions, having a go at trade unions. They all hold stop. It's the old chestnut, trying to remove the power of trade unions. Even Thatcher agreed that if a ballot had been carried out and unanimously supported, then it would be allowed. This was changed by a Labour government. And I think we ought to remind ourselves that the only way we can attack this is by reversing this with an election of a Labour government. It was they that introduced the national minimum wage, if you remember, for workers. They introduced the maternity leave and paternity leave with protected wages. Statute of holiday pay they introduced, statute sick pay, all that was introduced by a Labour government, which all seem to forget. Massive opposition, by the way, from the opponents. They thought we were going to bring the economy down when we had a national minimum wage. And therefore, unless you get them back in, it'll never be returned. And I hope, in my thoughts, we'll realise and understand that. But we must have a Labour government to protect the trade union movement and working people in this country. We have tradition, over the past hundred years, the only legislature that's ever gone through protecting the workers' rights has been by a Labour government.
Peters, thank you. Thank you. Mike Chaplin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'd like to congratulate Henry Nottingh on his maiden speech today. Trust me, it gets easier as you go along, so long as you're properly prepared. So I do find it really worrying that Margaret Thatcher was talked about earlier, and aspersions have been laid at our door. But people might want to remember that Margaret Thatcher was very careful in choosing her enemies and very much regarded trade union members as the enemy within. And it is very sad to see that this present government has gone down the same route with the acts they passed earlier this year. I think, I was actually surprised that the Lord Mayor didn't want to speak on this. As a former teacher, you'll be aware that many members in your profession are outraged that the current Secretary of State for Education is wanting to use this legislation to prevent teachers from going on strike. The Trade Union General Secretary, Paul Novak, has said that MPs, the House of Lords, even employers are condemning this draconian legislation instead of listening. The Tories are ploughing ahead with these spiteful laws, and they will poison industrial relations and exacerbate disputes, rather than seeking to resolve them. With our amendment, we're taking a different view to section C4, because we don't think it is right to promise something that we cannot deliver. The courts will decide whether...
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Peters, can you switch off yours, Mike, as well?
Okay. Point of order, please, point of order. I think on the Labour amendment, Labour is asking to do something that we can't do. We can't note that an incoming Labour government would repeal the Strikes Act. We can't note that an incoming Labour government would from day one implement a new deal for working people, because as we've already seen, Keir Starmer has reneged on every pledge he's ever made.
I think it may be a political point rather than a point of order here.
It should be believed.
Sit down, sit down.
You can't note.
Sit down. We're now moving on to eight. Amendment eight, Joe Thornton to move.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've rapidly prepared speech. I mean, I've been described in this chamber occasion as being anti-union, and I hope this amendment puts that to rest, along with the way that I vote on the amendments later on. Of course, I'm entirely in favour of people using their democratic rights to organise collectively and represent their interests. And it's the sort of things that, the freedom we enjoy in democratic societies that is prohibited in many other societies, including socialist dictatorships, where the first thing they do is abolish the unions. What I'm not so keen on is the hagiography that we sometimes hear about unions. You know, the fact that you use, exercise your rights to organise doesn't mean necessarily that you're right about something. And I do recall, when councillor Price mentioned the minimum wage, I do recall unions arguing against the minimum wage when it came in, because they thought, well, if we have the minimum wage, why would people bother to join for unions? And that was the example of them looking after themselves more than their members. And there are occasions of that. I also consider the amount we spend in this council on facility time to be excessive. It's the one thing that's gone up as the rest of the council services of the spend has gone down out of proportion. I think the proportion, if we left the proportions it was in 2011, that would be better. But I can have a disagreement with somebody while acknowledging their right to have their views and to express their views and pursue their interests in the way they see fit. That is the hallmark of a democratic society. As Voltaire said, I may disagree with what you say, but I will defend to the death of your right to say it, I say to the unions, sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. But you have absolutely every right to exist as you do and to organise as you do. Thank you.
Sophie Thornton to second the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've talked a lot in this council chamber today about division and healing division and not causing it. And whilst we've seen so many, so many sections of our work first on strike over the last couple of years in particular, from our teachers to our nurses, doctors and train strike workers, we've just seen that this government has treated people that are standing up for what they believe in and for better pay and conditions with complete and utter contempt. And it's completely unacceptable. And I'm really, really, I welcome the sections of this motion that really talk about standing against that division and the way that the government has treated those people. Because I just don't, I think it's completely unacceptable. I'm a proud member of a union as a care worker outside of this chamber. And I think that it's incredibly important, because I don't do it because it pays me very much, and I don't do it because it's easy. I do it because I care and because I enjoy doing it and I love it. And I think that there are so many people out there, particularly working in the care sector, like myself, supporting people with learning disabilities or even, you know, doing more work with people with mental health or older people, that do such a great amount of work. And I don't think we give them near enough credit or enough support. I know that in this council chamber, we've got a huge agreement across party that we need to do more to support people in the care sector in particular. And I think that's really welcomed. But that is not something, that's not a vision that the government seems to share. And I think that all of us need to stand really proudly together and talk and speak loudly against them for that. And I think that that's, in this motion in particular, I really, really welcome standing against that division, because it's just completely and utterly unacceptable. And thank you, Sophie, for bringing this. I'm glad that you've got the chance to have a full speech and debate on it. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We now move to amendment number nine. And councillor Toby Monis is going to move this, and it's his maiden speech.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a fellow maiden speaker, congratulations on Henry, on his maiden speech as well. The Green Amendment will strengthen this motion against the government's disgraceful continued attacks on trade unions. The government wants to be tough on strikes, but not on the causes of strikes. Lord Mayor, the Green Party has tabled a fatal amendment to the legislation due to be debated in the Lords later today. The Labour Party can only merely express regret, an incredible and shocking position for the so-called party of organised labour. We have a public service that is on its knees. There is constant squeezing of hardworking frontline staff through austerity, and also because of the vast sums wasted on the contractual bureaucracy and waste of the outsourcing and privatisation of all the services. Our trade unions are battling for restoration of lost funding and for funding wasted by the outsourcing and privatisation, and for that funding to be redistributed. Our country needs workers to be valued. This improves the quality of life for them, improves the retention of staff to our services and the quality of those services. The benefits of the economy are huge, as large numbers of people will be lifted out of the cost of living crisis and will become much more economically productive. We must support and value our trade unions and the essential role they have in redistributing wealth and improving working conditions. Thank you.
There won't be many more speakers to congratulate you on your maiden speech, so on behalf of the whole chamber, congratulations on your maiden speech. Martin Phipps, second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for this important motion, councillor Wilson. And congratulations on your great first speeches, Henry and Toby. I hope to hear many more. The Strikes Minimum Service Level Act exposes trade unions to being liable to pay damages of up to a million pounds and forces trade unions to act as enforcement agents on behalf of employers and the government. Tonight at seven, as Toby mentioned, Green Party Baroness Natalie Bennett of Manor Castle is proposing to throw this legislation out using the House of Lords fatal motion power, which in our amendment, we are calling on the council to support and to urge other members of the House of Lords to support. It's hugely disappointing that Labour are only proposing a regret motion in the House of Lords, which is effectively saying they will do nothing to stop this hugely damaging Tory proposal and makes this Labour amendment feel very hollow. Instead of the Tory hugely damaging and regressive approach to unions, we need a positive charter of workers' and trade union rights, enshrining the fundamental right to organise and strike, co-produced with trade unions. Please support the motion and our amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to debate on the matter. And I've got just two people indicating to speak at the moment, and that will probably take us the time with the right to reply. So councillor Rooney.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I think this is another example of the sort of thing I spoke about earlier. This is trying to find a scapegoat yet again for all the things that are wrong in society. This time, rather than people involved, it's people in trade unions. And I wish that they would also, as part of this legislation, guarantee a minimum service level in terms of the number of people in the health service, for example, or the number of teachers in the classrooms. But there is one thing that I do find really heartwarming, and that is the conversion of the Liberal Democrats to trade unionism. This is the party that year after year after year, in its budget amendments, proposes the reduction of the number of full-time officials. And not only that, a reduction in the salaries of certain sections of our workforce. So, you know, which, somebody spoke about amnesia earlier. I mean, I've had a stroke, but I haven't forgotten that.
Actually, I've now got no other speakers indicating, so the right of the reply, Sophie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be very brief. I'd like to say I'm very happy that everybody in the chamber seems to agree in spirit of the motion. And I completely agree with the Lib Dems, that even if I don't agree with...
It keeps happening to the mics today.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I agree with what you said, that even if you don't agree with what people are protesting or striking for, that you believe that they have the right to do it. I agree with that 100%. I do think it's a shame about the Labour motion, because I do think that everybody next to me probably agrees with what I'm saying. But it seems some directive from the top is stopping them agreeing with the resolutions. Which is a real shame. And I've got to say that I think Keir Starmer is holding you back, because some of you are brilliant comrades, and this is really sad to see. Apart from that, we'll leave it there. And thank you again for changing the order of business.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to go through the voting on the various amendments and the substantive. So the first amendment is the Labour amendment moved by Peter Price. Are there any voting in parts on this?
Lord Mayor, can I request this as a recorded vote?
If 10 people showed me the hands. Yeah, that's just 10. Yeah, okay. So that'll be done. So any voting in parts?
Lord Mayor, in voting against, we're for F.
Any other voting in parts? Yeah.
Same.
What did you say? Sorry?
Sorry, the same, so against but for F.
Right, okay.
Exactly the same, against but for F.
Right, let's go to the votes, please. One person to vote, I think. Again, just look at the three coloured buttons and if they're all still lit up, you haven't voted, even though you've logged in. Somebody... Okay, but that is lost, except that F will be carried forward. So F is added to the substantive at the moment. Right, we now go on to the amendment number eight, which is the Lib Dem amendment moved by Joe Otten. Any voting in parts on this? Yeah.
Yes, voting in parts, but can we record this one too?
I'd hate to see 10 hands. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Yes, there's 10 hands there, thank you.
And just while I'm here, for voting in parts, we're voting against but we're voting for three. For three.
Okay, Ruth, did you indicate?
It did indicate, Lord Mayor. I'm not sure quite how the balance works out here, but I think we're saying we're voting against but abstaining on two and voting against the deletion, as mentioned in one, but voting for the part three addition.
Okay, Paul's getting that, so Sophie.
I think exactly the same as Labour, so no to the deletion in one, but happy for it to be added, abstaining on two and for three.
Okay, right, can we then move to the electronic voting, please? Right, that is lost, but have any parts got through? We're just checking which bits have got through. Okay, right, just, yeah. What we've got is, because of the voting in parts, two of the groups, Lib Dems and SEC, voted for everything and the voting in parts has meant that part three has got through and prompt me here, Paul. Oh, yeah, and part two has got through as well because people voting for it and Labour abstained on that one, so that's got through as well.
My notes suggest that part one got through as an addition. I wasn't entirely clear what Labour's voting in parts was. When they said against the deletion, part one, but for three, did they mean the three under part one? Because if so, that comes through as an addition.
To clarify, Lord Mayor, we were against the deletion of sub paragraph B3, but we were for the addition of the numbered three text under one.
Okay, so that clearly has got through, that bit that you were in favour of, but not the deletion. I'm going to move on to the next bit and because we've now moved to the amendment, the Green Amendment now. Is there any voting in parts on this? You're not voting in parts on your own amendment?
No, can we record it?
10 hands, please. Right, recorded, yeah. Yeah, Ruth?
In abstaining on this, we're voting for one, the three, and three, nine, three IX.
So you're abstaining but for...
Let's start again. We're abstaining but voting for one, so the addition of three, and we're voting for part three, nine, one, three, IX. And we're abstaining on two. No, sorry, against two, sorry, against two and against three, part eight.
Okay, right.
Sorry. God help me, right, okay. Abstaining, voting for one, voting for three, one X, voting against two and against three, VII, seven.
That's what Paul's got originally, yeah. Any other voting in parts? Right, can we go to the... Go to the electronic voting now? Yeah, so abstaining. Two still to vote, but I think I know what's going to happen here. But this is, with all the abstentions, basically it gets through. It'll get through in full, won't it? No, apart from the bits, but loss was part two and part three, seven. So we now move to the vote on the substantive as amended. And if you're following it... Voting in parts on this, let's see if we can make sense of this. Joe?
Thank you. In voting for, we are going to abstain on the B3 that we tried to amend and any amendment text as before.
Ruth?
We're voting for the substantive motion but against C1V, IV. And otherwise consistently with the things what I said before on the amendments.
And if you can remember what you said before.
Hold up, written down.
Yes, Paul's got it written down. Martin?
So in voting for, we'll vote against part two of the Lib Dem amendment.
Okay, can we go to the electronic votes on this, please? Okay, that concludes the voting, which the substantive motion is passed, apart from the bits that haven't passed. It's the best I can do. Right, we now go back to item of business nine, which is, and this will be done formally, this is the one on banning the use of vapes. So Sue Olson, formally move.
Oh, it still works. Formally moved, Lord Mayor.
Ian Holner?
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Proposed amendment, Ruth?
Lord Mayor, formally proposed, may I, in burg your indulgence, make one tiny little announcement, which I would have made in my speech, that pertains to...
Just do it.
Right, may I?
Yes.
Go on.
It's just that there's a consultation currently open under the Department of Health and Social Care on this very topic, on creating a smoke regeneration and tackling youth vaping, which closes at midnight tonight and I would urge members to have a quick look online before you lose the will to live tonight and take part in that. It does take a little bit of engagement, but please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alison, you've lost your maiden speech. Again, this is fated, we must do something about this.
I'll just say formally seconded.
You're getting good at that, now, then. You've still got your round of applause, so there you go. Right, so we're now moving to the, just voting on, where are we? The Labour amendment. Is there any dissent? Oh, go on. Voting in parts on this?
Go on, it's not too bad. In voting for, we're voting against power four.
So basically, just against paragraph four. Right, can we move to the vote on this?
Oh, sorry, sorry, against three.
Three and four?
Just three.
Just three?
Just three, not four.
You don't like clear health advice? What? You don't like health advice being clear? You don't like experts?
Come on, we're getting towards the end now. Log on. You voted already now. One to vote, but basically, yeah, it's carried in full. The whole thing's carried in full because all the other groups voted in favour of it. Can we then move to the vote on the substantive motion? Again, I presume the dissent is the same as it was before.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Right, so we'll have to repeat it electronically. And I'm assuming we get exactly the same result. Okay, so that's passed in full, the original motion and the amendment are all passed. Right, okay, a couple of just bits of formal business to do to conclude it. Item 11 on the agenda, minutes of the previous meeting. It's proposed the minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on the 4th of October 2020 be approved as a true and accurate record. The November minutes are not here yet, but we will catch up, I would be assured, by the next council meeting in February and will not be working behind, because I've raised this. So formally moved?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Formally seconded?
Formally, Lord Mayor.
And it's that agreed? Agreed, thank you. Item 12, membership of council bodies and representatives who serve on other bodies, that has been circulated and it's going to be moved by Sean Ed.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Seconded by Joe.
Formally, Lord Mayor.
Is that agreed? Thank you and I believe that concludes business for today's meeting. Thank you all for attendance and season's greetings to you all and hope you have a busy next couple of weeks but a restful break over the holidays. Thank you very much.